All right, good evening. It is 5:30 PM and I call to order the September 16th, 2025 Board of Trustees Meeting. Do I hear a motion to enter executive session?
Madam Chair, I move to enter executive session to discuss employment recommendation updates, to review 2025-2026 homeschool applications, and to receive legal advice regarding concurrency requirements pertaining to Lexington County Council Ordinance 23-17.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Pazuti. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? And motion carries. Now we will enter executive session.
Our focus is clear. We're building school communities where every student can learn, grow, and excel. That starts with making sure students and staff feel safe, supported, and confident every day they walk through our doors. Our strong partnerships with local law enforcement agencies are central to our safety efforts. Together, we are building a culture of prevention, preparedness, and protection across every school in Lexington One.
From daily presence in schools to ongoing safety planning, we are actively involved in keeping our schools safe and welcoming.
Our students deserve a learning environment that is calm, consistent, and focused. We're united with Lexington One in creating spaces where teachers can teach and students can thrive, free from distraction or fear.
Our partnership with Lexington One is built on trust and shared purpose. When concerns arise, we act quickly and responsibly to protect everyone on campus. Together, we're committed to safe schools and strong communities.
When a safety concern is reported, we act immediately, thoroughly, and in coordination with our law enforcement partners. We are grateful for their constant support and for our community's shared commitment to protecting our schools.
We know school safety is never one and done. It is an ongoing responsibility. That's why our teams stay vigilant and proactive, always learning and improving. Thank you for being part of our shared commitment to safety. Working together, we're building schools that support and protect every student, every staff member, every day. Because when our schools are safe, our students can...
Hello, I'm Keith Price, and I am honored to serve as the new superintendent of Lexington County School District One. As we begin a brand-new school year together, I'd like to share my vision for what's ahead that can be applied to every classroom and every school throughout our wonderful district. It's simple, but powerful, and one that has rested at the core of what I truly believe every educational experience should include. So if our classrooms, schools, and districts are operating to full potential, that means that every person will feel cared for, challenged, supported, heard, celebrated, and prepared. This vision can be applied to every student, faculty, and staff member. Because when we care for each other, when we push each other to grow, and when every voice matters, we create a place where great things happen. And guiding this vision, our graduate profile. A shared guide that helps pursue our district's mission of guiding all students to learn, grow, and excel. It's not just about test scores or diplomas. It's also about helping our students grow into kind, confident, and capable individuals, ready for whatever comes next, and regardless of their chosen pathway beyond high school. Whether it's to enroll, employ, or enlist, our task is to have all students prepare to excel. So here's to a year of growth, connection, and celebration. I warmly welcome each and every one of you, students, staff, families, and community members, back to our Lexington One family. Let's make it a great year.
Good morning. Well, it's kind of like Christmas morning. You get really excited the night before, and seeing them all come back on the first day of school is just a special day. Good morning! You got a car full! It's been a great start to the day. We began our morning at Gilbert Elementary.
Few scouts that have birthdays today, so they get a birthday and the first day of school. That's like a double whammy right off the bat.
Lots of smiling faces, students eager to get going with their first day of school.
So smooth this morning.
Okay, good.
And lots of happy people, happy faces.
What's your favorite thing about school?
Um, we get to learn.
We've seen students and teachers and educators teaching and learning, standard operating procedures and routines, what it means to change classes, what it means to come into the cafeteria. We've been able to see some really creative teaching going on on day one. We see some read-alouds. We've seen a variety of different things. I've gotten to talk to several different students. My best days, my favorite days, are when I'm out in schools and visiting classrooms. One is I get to engage with our educators, but two, it's just something about being around students and seeing them and engaging with them and having conversations with them that really recharges my batteries. So it's been a great first day for me as well.
Have a fantastic first day, Warriors. We can't wait to see you all do great things.
When I was in fifth grade, my mom pulled me from public school and I was homeschooled up until graduation. Once we were down here, years later, I actually came to get information about Midlands Tech and wanted to go and found out that the high school diploma that I received wasn't good. I started in the middle of November, and I was done with my GED in mid-March.
Her journey kind of encapsulates all of the services that we can provide here. So Lindsay joined our program in the 24-25 school year working on her GED. She had a barrier to childcare as something that could potentially limit her access to our program. So we partnered with our folks here at the Family Center with Ms. Ziegler, and she took care of Lindsay's daughter.
She would come every day with me, and I would drop her off at childcare. It's just right down the hall. And she absolutely loved it. I remember when I actually finished and got my GED, she was so upset that, you know, we weren't going to come here anymore.
Lindsay is a true testimony of what the Family Center does. She is one of many success stories here at the Family Center. Her desire to want to do better for her children and her family is truly inspiring, and it's been amazing in my role to see her. It just shows that with the right support, you can really achieve anything.
When you look at the services that we provide, six months, I think, is the youngest that they'll take them to the childcare center. And then our oldest participant in our ESL and GED program this past year was 73 years old. So you're right, it is a wide gap of community service that we have here at Northlake and Adult Education.
Towards the end of getting my GED, I was already getting enrolled in Midlands Tech for phlebotomy and doing my clinicals.
I just love how they can do everything under one roof. You can get your GED or your high school diploma, and then you can come here and start working towards a training certificate and/or on the academic side, towards an academic certificate or your associate's degree.
I know that there were so many times that I couldn't have made it over the hump without them. And so I am just so grateful to all these people that have encouraged me.
Come be the one who helps our school run smoothly and efficiently.
Come be the one who greets students and family with a smile every day.
Come be the one who goes above and beyond to help our students and staff succeed.
Come be the one who serves me delicious and nutritious meals and makes sure every student is well fun.
Come be the one who makes learning fun and makes me love coming to school.
Come be the one who makes sure our schools are clean and safe and the one who makes sure our schools are in tip-top shape.
Come be the one who keeps me healthy and safe.
Come be the one who greets me with a smile at the bus stop and safely transports me to and from school, and the one who makes sure I get to my game on time.
Come be the one who challenges me to think critically and encourages me to never give up on my dreams.
Come be the one who makes it possible for all students to learn and grow.
Come be the one who supports me in the classroom and helps me reach my full potential.
Come be the one who makes our schools a special place.
Here in Lexington One, we're preparing students to learn, grow, and excel. That's why we're committed to providing every student with a world-class education. One that equips them for success in college, career, or military, and beyond. To guide that mission, we created the Lexington One Graduate Profile. A clear vision of the skills and mindsets our students need to thrive in their futures.
We listen to our community, families, educators, and students, and together we identified nine essential competencies for every graduate. We want our students to be knowledgeable, creative, independent, communicators, collaborators, future-ready, responsible, kind, resilient. These aren't just ideals. They shape how we teach, how students learn, and how we help them grow.
Whether they're headed to college, straight into a career, or into military service, the graduate profile ensures every student is ready for what's next. At Lexington One, we're not just preparing students for the future, we're helping them build it. Because when our students succeed, we all do. Our focus is clear. We're building school communities where every student can learn, grow, and excel. That starts with making sure students and staff feel safe, supported, and confident every day they walk through our doors. Our strong partnerships with local law enforcement agencies are central to our safety efforts. Together, we are building a culture of prevention, preparedness, and protection across every school in Lexington One.
From daily presence in schools to ongoing safety planning, we are actively involved in keeping our schools safe and welcoming.
Our students deserve a learning environment that is calm, consistent, and focused. We're united with Lexington One in creating spaces where teachers can teach and students can thrive, free from distraction or fear.
Our partnership with Lexington One is built on trust and shared purpose. When concerns arise, we act quickly and responsibly to protect everyone on campus. Together, we're committed to safe schools and strong communities.
When a safety concern is reported, we act immediately, thoroughly, and in coordination with our law enforcement partners. We are grateful for their constant support and for our community's shared commitment to protecting our schools.
We know school safety is never one and done. It is an ongoing responsibility. That's why our teams stay vigilant and proactive, always learning and improving. Thank you for being part of our shared commitment to safety. Working together, we're building schools that support and protect every student, every staff member, every day. Because when our schools are safe, our students can...
Hello, I'm Keith Price, and I am honored to serve as the new superintendent of Lexington County School District One. As we begin a brand-new school year together, I'd like to share my vision for what's ahead that can be applied to every classroom and every school throughout our wonderful district. It's simple, but powerful, and one that has rested at the core of what I truly believe every educational experience should include. So if our classrooms, schools, and districts are operating to full potential, that means that every person will feel cared for, challenged, supported, heard, celebrated, and prepared. This vision can be applied to every student, faculty, and staff member. Because when we care for each other, when we push each other to grow, and when every voice matters, we create a place where great things happen. And guiding this vision, our graduate profile. A shared guide that helps pursue our district's mission of guiding all students to learn, grow, and excel. It's not just about test scores or diplomas. It's also about helping our students grow into kind, confident, and capable individuals, ready for whatever comes next, and regardless of their chosen pathway beyond high school. Whether it's to enroll, employ, or enlist, our task is to have all students prepare to excel. So here's to a year of growth, connection, and celebration. I warmly welcome each and every one of you, students, staff, families, and community members, back to our Lexington One family. Let's make it a great year.
Good morning. Well, it's kind of like Christmas morning. You get really excited the night before, and seeing them all come back on the first day of school is just a special day. Good morning! You got a car full! It's been a great start to the day. We began our morning at Gilbert Elementary.
Few scouts had birthdays today, so they get a birthday and the first day of school. That's like a double whammy right off the bat.
Lots of smiling faces, students eager to get going with their first day of school.
So smooth this morning.
Okay, good.
And lots of happy people, happy faces.
What's your favorite thing about school?
Um, you get to learn.
We've seen students and teachers and educators teaching and learning, standard operating procedures and routines, what it means to change classes, what it means to come into the cafeteria. We've been able to see some really creative teaching going on on day one. We see some read-alouds, we've seen a variety of different things. I've gotten to talk to several different students. My best days, my favorite days, are when I'm out in schools and visiting classrooms. One is I get to engage with our educators, but two, it's just something about being around students and seeing them and engaging with them and having conversations with them that really recharges my batteries. So it's been a great first day for me as well.
Have a fantastic first day, Warriors. We can't wait to see you all do great things.
Are we ready? Come on. Hello. Okay. All right, thank y'all for waiting for us. Um, do I hear a motion to conclude executive session?
Madam Chair, I move we conclude executive session and return to general session.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Alrighty, I call to order the September 16th, 2025 Board Meeting. The district is in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act by notifying the media of the date, time, and place of the meeting. The district tapes the meeting for accuracy and preparing the minutes. I yield the floor now to Vice Chair Shealy.
Madam Chair, fellow board members, staff, and guests, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, I now yield the floor back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Little delayed there.
Wake up, man. Wake up, wake up.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda items as listed slash amended.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Shealy. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. All right, do I hear a motion regarding employment recommendations?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve five certified recommendations for the 2025-2026 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Um, all those in favor? Oh, any discussion? Ms. Price, how are we, are we still looking as great as we were last month with our...
We do at this time. We don't have any certified vacancies posted, just a few support staff, so looking great.
Wonderful. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. All right, I don't believe we have any other action items stemming from executive session. So we are going to, sorry, move on to honors and achievements. This is our favorite part of the night, so please remember to grab your Proof Positive Newsletter that highlights our honorees, and that newsletter was on the sign-in table when you came in, in the back. Once we finish, we'll give our honorees a chance to leave before we resume the rest of our meeting. Dr. Price, will you please step down? Honorees, when you hear your name, come and stand with Dr. Price as we tell the audience all about you and your achievements. Somebody's very excited to be here tonight. For our first award of the evening, we are proud to recognize Pillion High School's head athletic trainer, Zachary Richards. Zach, would you please join us at the front? Zach was recently honored with the Emerging Leader Award by the National Athletic Trainers Association. This prestigious award was presented to athletic trainers who exemplify the highest levels of service, integrity, professionalism, and competence. Over the past two years, Zach has been recognized at the state, district, and national levels for his dedication and success. Beyond serving the Pillion community, he has also made a lasting impact on the athletic training profession by helping secure licensure for athletic trainers in South Carolina, protecting patients across the state, and ensuring parity with other states nationwide. Please join me in congratulating Zach Richards on this outstanding accomplishment. Please join me congratulating Zach Richards on this outstanding accomplishment. For our next recognition, we are proud to honor three of our schools that have received awards from America's healthiest schools. Schools can earn recognition in nine topic areas including nutrition and food access, physical education and activity, health education, school health services, staff well-being, family and community engagement, local school wellness policy, tobacco-free schools, and social emotional health and learning. For the photographs, we invite Seth Shelby, Programs... I knew, I recognized you! He was my elementary kids' PE teacher, and I was like, okay, hi, welcome. For the photographs, we invite Seth Shelby, Programs and Strategy Project Manager for the Alliance for a Healthier Generation, to the front. Mr. Shelby has been instrumental in helping these schools, and eventually all schools in Lexington One achieved this honor. The Alliance for Healthier Generation celebrates schools like these for the key role they play in advancing the physical, mental, and emotional health of students, staff, and families. For the first time, Oak Grove Elementary joins this distinguished group as a multi-categorical winner, award winner. We are excited to welcome Principal Christy Graham to the front to accept this honor. She is joined tonight by OGES Nurse Karen Becker, PE Teacher Sonia Bame Smith, and Teacher Fresnel Coezia... Sita? I'm so sorry. No, I got this. Coezzi... Sia? Did I say it right? Coezia? Ms. Fresnel, welcome. Congratulations, Oak Grove. Would Principal Tim Carnahan please join us at the front? Midway Elementary has once again been named one of America's healthiest schools, demonstrating their ongoing commitment to the health and well-being of both students and staff. Midway Elementary School received honors in seven of the nine topic areas. Congratulations. Next, we would like to invite Beachwood Middle School Assistant Principal Mickey Summerall and Sixth Grade Social Studies Teacher Angie Kruger to the front. Beachwood Middle has achieved an incredible milestone, becoming one of the very first schools in South Carolina to receive the All-Star Award. The All-Star Award is a distinction for schools that meet this recognition criteria in all nine of these categories, demonstrating a comprehensive commitment to the physical, mental, and social emotional well-being of their students, staff, and community. Receiving the All-Star distinction signifies the school's dedication to supporting the whole child by addressing multiple facets of health and wellness. Congratulations. We are so proud of these schools for prioritizing the health of our learners, making school a better, healthier place. Congratulations and keep up the great work. Oh, just kidding, I turned the page. Mickey and Angie, could you just stay up front as we recognize Beachwood Middle for our last award of the night? Beachwood Middle was named the twenty twenty-five Overall School of the Year by the South Carolina Green Step Schools. First, to earn Green Step certification, schools must demonstrate ongoing projects in three areas: conserving, protecting, and restoring. Beachwood Middle School went above and beyond by maintaining multiple projects in each of these categories. Some highlights include completing the Next Trex, the Next Trex Recycle Challenge, collecting and recycling one thousand pounds of plastic, and earning a new bench made from the recycled materials; hosting bimonthly campus cleanups to keep our grounds beautiful and sustainable; growing and maintaining multiple school gardens that serve a variety of purposes for learning and sustainability; propagating plants so that every teacher can have a living plant in their classroom. That's so great! Installing and maintaining rain barrels to conserve water. These efforts not only conserve resources but also instill environmental stewardship in our students. We congratulate Beachwood Middle on this outstanding recognition and thank Miss Kruger and her team for leading these initiatives. All right, I think you're good, Dr. Price. We would like to recognize the principals and assistant principals who are in attendance with us tonight. Would you please stand? I see you. There we go. Thank you so much for taking time tonight to help us recognize our amazing staff and schools, we have, and students. We have some very talented individuals in our district, and we love sharing their achievements with you. Now, at this time, if you need to leave, we will give you a quick and quiet moment to do that. All right, we're kind of changing it up a little bit tonight, and so Agenda Item Eight is citizens' participation. Lexington County School District One Board of Trustees solicits the advice and counsel of its citizens. To encourage this participation, the Board provides a citizens' participation period during board meetings. If you are unable to attend this meeting or uncomfortable addressing the Board in person, you may reach out to the Board by email, telephone, or mail. Our contact information is available on the Lexington District One website. As you came in tonight, you received a card to fill out if you indicated you wanted to speak. I will call on each speaker by name and ask you to approach the lectern. We want to remind you that this meeting is being livestreamed and that the recording of this meeting will be part of the public record in perpetuity. You may comment on agenda items, school operations, policies, programs. You may not speak about or name specific individuals, whether students or school or district staff. Failure, failure to follow this rule will result in immediate loss of the opportunity to speak. The Board will not reply to your remarks nor take any actions during the board meeting in response to your comments or questions. You may address the Board for up to three minutes. If you have any handouts for the Board, please give them to Miss Halliday in the back of the room, and she will distribute them. Please do not clap or make any comments, either while an individual speaks or after he or she finishes. First up, we have Shannon Anderson to speak about safety.
Is there a button? It's on? Okay. Hello?
Okay. Um, first, I just want to thank you all for being on the Board, putting in your effort, your time. I know it's a hard job, and I also want to thank my kid's school that I won't name. Absolutely love the principals, teachers, admin. They're phenomenal. Um, my objective tonight is to talk about student safety, student safety by implementing three low-cost, high-impact procedures, one being approved, pre-approved lunch visitor list. Um, each student should have a approved lunch visitor list. Um, the key features of this would include that parents can update the list anytime via a secure phone call with a passcode. Visitors not on the approved list should not be allowed access into the school during lunch sessions, and the list can be integrated with existing student information systems to minimize the administrative burden, i.e. persons available for pickup. The rationale behind this is to prevent unauthorized individuals from gaining access into our schools. It reduces the burden on the front office staff who may otherwise be in a situation to make judgment calls on visitors, and it creates clear boundaries and expectations. My second point is mandatory identification and reason for entry before walking into our schools. Prior to being buzzed into the building, all visitors should have to state their name, reason for visit, and presenting their government-issued ID via the video intercom system. The key features to this would be installing the video-enabled intercoms or using the existing ones; requiring all visitors to verbally identify themselves and their purpose before entry into our schools. The staff can verify the visitor has a legitimate reason and is on an expected visitor list. The rationale behind this is it is too late to assess a person's intentions after they are inside our schools. Individuals attending harm exhibit warning signs, and these are much easier to catch and detect before entry into our schools. This is a step as creating a critical barrier between the outside world and our students and staff inside our schools. Third, preventing tailgating. This is, is very easy. Establishes a new tailgating policy. All visitors must enter individually by being buzzed in by the staff. Key features would be politely reminders, having a friendly sign outside saying, "For everyone's safety, please don't hold the door for others, even if you know them." Um, the rationale is unauthorized individuals pass the screening procedures put in place. So, with closing, I just want to say we're all on the same team. All of our kids want to feel safe and supported at school. The school doors are locked, but real safety comes from the small steps we can take behind those locks. Checking who comes in, knowing what they're there for, and making sure no one slips in unnoticed. These simple, respectful changes help protect our students without making school feel like a fortress, just a safer, more mindful place to learn. It's all about prevention and not reaction. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, next we have Denny Titcomb, who is also here to speak about safety.
I was hoping my husband was gonna come. I don't definitely get through this. I'm gonna have to have someone of you come in. No. Yeah? Please? It's okay. You can sit down.
Dear School Board Members, I have been...
Ms. Ruth.
Yes, yes, sir.
Uh, Ms. Halliday, could you start the three minutes over? Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. I have been employed by our district for thirty years. I never thought I would be addressing the Board on this issue, especially with my child being involved. Last child, my continued to email me saying she didn't feel well. I told her to email the assistant principal and asked to go to the nurse. After I finished dismissal, she continued to say she felt horrible. I called to get the school to get her to the nurse. I spoke to the AP, and she said she was very flat, was concerned. I took her to the pediatrician. We were there for about forty-five minutes, and he sent us to the emergency department. Medical reports came back positive for drug use. My tone absolutely changed, and I told my child to start talking. I called the AP and turned my child in. My heart sunk. I was terrified. My life had just been forcibly stopped. The next day, my child went to school with my mom, and she gave a statement to the AP, as well as the team did a safety assessment on her to make sure she was not going to harm herself or in the mindset to commit suicide, which she wasn't, thankfully. Needless to say, she was high on drugs. From what the assistant principal got out of her, she had taken eight Ativan and several drugs of a THC vape on top of her ADHD drugs. I'm horrified. My child continued last year and this year talking about students vaping in the bathroom, and now she's involved. Several weeks ago, she walked toward the bathrooms and said she was locked in on a drug deal. So, my child also has severe ADHD and has autism. She is a good student and a smart student. She was on track to graduate early. She met some new friends, was influenced, started cutting class to hang out with her new friends in the cafeteria, which led her to taking away, to go into Lexington Technology Team. Her team at school, as well as myself, placed some very strict parameters in place for her, with limitations to her friends. She was mad and sad. Apparently, she made that remark to students who gave her pills to help her take her sadness away. With her autism, she does not have the cause and effect or emotional regulations that we have to understand the right from wrong from these situations. However, this was not seen as being part of her disability. I stand before you begging for something to be done in our schools. My child could have overdosed. I am fortunate. We caught her behavior just within a couple of weeks. Unfortunately, on Thursday of that week, I had a stroke in my classroom in front of my students. Spent the night at the hospital, and my husband and mother went through one of the hardest nights of their life. The next morning, my mom, while I was still in the hospital, took her for another safety assessment. Denny, I'm gonna skip to the end so I can get to the conclusion. As a parent, I want more. I want more than my child receiving the education. I want my child to be safe. I teach first grade. I have to watch children to lunch, stay with them on the playground, lunchroom, and dismiss them. I don't know, maybe I want more visibility of adults in the bathrooms in the middle school and high school. I want our children safe. I have to commend my child on the statement that she gave to the school. Assistant Principal said her statement did help make her school safer. Please help us keep all of our children safe.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. Okay, Board, we are moving on to new business, and at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Miller for the twenty twenty-five B bond sale update.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Dr. Price, and Board members. This evening, we have our bond attorney, Mr. Theo DeBose, with Haynesworth, Sinkler, and Boyd, along with our financial advisor, Mr. Mike Gallagher with Compass Municipal Advisors, who are here to provide an update on the two thousand twenty-five B bond sale. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Gallagher.
Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Dr. Price, it's a pleasure to be back with you again tonight. Um, I've compiled a myriad of information for you. Um, some of it's about the bond sale from twenty twenty-three B. Some of it just gives a little historical. Some of it goes back over the past several years to put things into context. So, um, if we'll begin, we'll look here. Um, these are the bond sales that the district has had over the last five years. You, you'll notice that the rates back in twenty-one were down at forty basis points. It was incredibly low. Um, they spiked in twenty-four, but, uh, the nice thing was is the sale we had last week for the twenty twenty-five Bs, um, came in at a rate of two-point-four-six percent. Um, we received five bids, and the winning bidder on that was JP Morgan. Um, other, other information on this page that I think is good for you to see is the LGIP rate, which is the Local Government Investment Pool, and that is the fund where the district puts your capital projects money. So, the money that's not used for payments, money you have for projects while it's waiting to be spent on those projects, it's invested with State Treasurer's Office, and you could see the rate on those. So, you're actually two percent above what the rate is, what your borrowing rate is. So, while that money's there, now, you won't get to keep all that interest unless you spend it and meet certain arbitrage rules. And so, Jennifer's aware of that, and on top of following and tracking it, um, but I wanted to bring that to your attention. Of the twenty twenty-five B, thirty million dollars was for capital projects, two million dollars was to fund your two thousand thirteen IPRB, which is installment purchase revenue bond payment, and three million was for your two thousand fifteen installment purchase revenue bond payment. Um, then the next slide, bit of information we have for you is, um, a sort of an update of the three hundred sixty-five million dollar referendum that was held in two thousand and eighteen. Um, it's interesting that all of you that are here tonight are all new on the Board. You weren't here when that was done, and we did a lot of planning for it back in two thousand seventeen, sixteen, seventeen, leading up to that in eighteen. Um, the, the voters approved three hundred sixty-five million dollars. There was thirty-three-point-five million dollars of that that was not issued. There was an elementary school that the demographics didn't support, and the Board made the decision to not move forward with that project. So, there was thirty-three-point-five million dollars of that authorization that was not issued. Very strong bid activity, and, uh, very good rates were received on those bonds. The next slide, this is a graph, the debt structure graph, that's pulled from the two thousand nineteen B final numbers. And the reason I, I put this in is to show you that the debt service levy or the target levy under that referendum program was actually ninety-nine mils. So, when the district was going through the planning, assessing their needs, built their capital improvement plan, they came to us and said, "Run the numbers. How much is it gonna cost? What would the levy be?" Um, we ran it, and it was targeted to go to ninety mils. Because that one project was pulled out, but more importantly, because there were a couple of refundings and the favorable rates that were received, we were able to bring that and lower that target down to ninety mils instead of ninety-nine mils. So, we were nine mils below what was in the information that was put out to the public in two thousand and eighteen when you were going... when you were going through the process of the referendum. So one of those big keys is is that target levy. That's important for us to know how to structure and size the bonds. And what it does is that target levy should include all of your capital projects. That would be technology, that would be renovations, annual capital maintenance, and new facilities for growth or major renovations. I know y'all are looking now at a demographic study and potentially a facility study. Those would feed in and drive what that target levy would be and figure out how it works. One of the big benefits and Carl Fulmer, I don't know if any of y'all remember, Dr. Fulmer, when he was here, you know, he told me that he's a, one thing he realized was the millage needed to stay as level as possible. You didn't want very rash swings in it, up and down. Because forty-eight percent of your tax base is owner-occupied homes. Most of those homes all have a mortgage on them. If the folks have a mortgage, their taxes and insurance are escrowed. And so what happens is when that millage goes up or down, if it goes up, they're going to raise their payments. If you drop it one year and then raise it the next year, that will mess with the escrow where they'll get a refund and then the following year when you go back. So that's why it's real important to consider trying to maintain a level millage rate. And let's look a little bit into the the funds that are available for debt service. We've got here over the last five years, the first column is this millage that is is revenue that comes in from millage. And part of that millage money is sales tax. In Lexington County, there is a local option sales tax. The way it works is the the State Department of Revenue collects the money. They send it to the county treasurer. The county treasurer then sets it aside and it is applied as a credit. Lexington County is the only way, only district, only county in the state where it's set up as a credit. Most other districts, the 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 school district gets the direct benefit of the funds. But in this case, the legislature legislators wanted it set up where you set what the levy was going to be and then it was a credit applied on the tax bill to the taxpayers. And it's based on what their percentages of the property within the county. Other thing to notice is the interest earnings, that has been up over the last few years. I would imagine when the rate we're going, we'll see where the Fed goes, that number could be coming down in the next couple of years. Fee and lieu taxes has been up and your state sources, so it's your homestead reimbursement. So aging population, you may be getting a little bit more money there. But, you know, total funds available for debt services went from fifty-five million up to seventy-three million. And so let's let's take a look at assessed value over the last ten years. Back in fiscal two thousand fifteen, we were right at five hundred and twenty-five million dollars. Projection for twenty-five is eight hundred and sixty-two and you could see the growth rate. There has been very rap, there has been growth, which, you know, you would expect in this area. It's a desirable area. Other piece of information I put in is just what the consumer price index is, so you could see where CPI is. Unfortunately, that doesn't really capture what's your construction cost inflation. Your operation director probably give you a whole lot better idea on that. But we know that the cost of construction projects have escalated quite a bit over the years. So your buying power is a little bit less. So that may result in needing to borrow a little bit more money depending on what the needs of the district are. And then let's break down the classification of assets of of assessed valuation. Sixty-eight percent is in the owner occupied, in the real estate area. Those are subject to reassessment. Those are the only part that's gonna be reassessed every five years is going to be the owner occupied. And those folks that are owner occupied, they do pay debt service levy, but they get a credit for the operating. So there's no school operating taxes. All the other classifications do pay full freight on operations and debt. Motor vehicles is makes up almost twenty. So I mean, you've got eighty-eight percent is almost in consumer type items. You've got six percent that is in public utilities, a little bit of manufacturing. Watercraft, obviously, being so close to Lake Murray, you got a lot of folks with boats. And then business personal property at the bottom that makes up two percent of your total assessed value. And so I know we had some questions last time about reassessment. And I can't take credit for the idea of how this looks. There was an article that was in the Post and Courier a couple of weeks ago that had a graphic similar to this. And I thought it was a perfect illustration to show that two properties from two thousand and twenty, this was the median home price at that time. I pulled it off of Zillow, it was two hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. The total taxes that were paid for both of those homes was three hundred and thirteen thousand. Two thousand and twenty-four, one of those homes sold for three fifty-nine, the other one did not. And then we'll flash forward to two thousand and twenty-five, the year of reassessment. You'll notice that the property that had sold, there was no change because it had recently been adjusted to the market value. Where the home two, the value went to two hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars, and that was capped at fifteen percent. So the owner occup, the property under reassessment is capped at twenty-five, at fifteen percent. And then at the next reassessment in two thousand and thirty, both properties would be subject to the fifteen percent cap again. And then we'll look at the impacts of a commercial property or a six percent. This would include non-owner occupied properties as well as apartment buildings, commercial and business. So we had two properties identical in two thousand and twenty that were valued at five hundred thousand or purchased at five hundred thousand. Move forward to two thousand and twenty-four, one of those properties sold for one million dollars. There is a provision with that came out in two thousand and ten on assessable transfer of interest for non-owner occupied properties that you could apply for an exemption of twenty-five percent. And so we applied the exemption here for illustrative purposes and the tax bill went from fifteen thirty-six to two thousand, three hundred and three dollars, whereas the other property remained at five hundred thousand for a bill of one thousand, five hundred and thirty-six. The next year during reassessment, because that one had not, had changed previously, it did not move, whereas the other property increased in value by the cap of fifteen percent. And the tax bill went from fifteen thirty-six to one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. We also wanted to look, because there was a question about business personal property. That's gonna be things such as furniture, fixtures, and equipment. Those are things that are depreciated over time. They're not gonna be subject to reassessment, so they would not be subject to the fifteen percent cap. Two thousand and twenty-four, you had a hundred thousand dollars worth of business property for a total debt service of seven hundred and twelve dollars. It depreciated the next year down to ninety thousand for a total debt service of six hundred and forty-one dollars. The last two pages break things down a little bit as the composition of your levy. So you could see how much is coming from the area in dark blue is the amount that's covered by the sales tax credit and and gives the amount and that's grown from twenty-eight million to thirty-nine point six million dollars. And the area in the top that is tan is all other things. So that's gonna be your property taxes, fee and lieu, interest earnings, and things of that nature. But if you broke it down and looked at your debt service levy, this is, I thought was very interesting. Back in two thousand and nineteen, the sales tax offset thirty-six point nine or thirty-seven percent and thirty-eight, thirty-seven mils and forty-eight mils was what was paid by the the taxpayers. And then over this period of time, and part of it's the Amazon effect or the collection of sales tax on online purchases, you can see that really hit in two thousand, twenty-one, twenty-two. And so we've seen a little bit of a shift where the sales tax is now picking up more of your effective levy. And so once that credit's applied, the true tax rate or the amount that's being paid by the taxpayer or in the form of property taxes is down to about thirty-seven and a half mils. So that's a little different than ninety. You look at ninety and say, wow, that's a lot. But with that tax credit that's in there, brings it down to thirty-seven and a half. And so that concludes the information I have prepared for you tonight. If you got any questions, I'm happy to try to address them.
Mr. Gallagher, I do have one question. I think I I didn't hear you clearly. You mentioned that Lexington County is the only county, I guess, in the state that provides a credit back. Could you explain that point again to me?
And and so if you, like Anderson County, Kershaw County, Ori County, all of the sales tax money comes in and then it's distributed to the the municipality or the school district, whomever has the tax of its educational capital project sales tax. It will come to the school district and it will be used directly to pay for the debt. Or in Ori's county's case, it's used directly to pay for projects. So Lexington County is different from the other forty-six.
So basically, I guess if we're looking at our tax bill and it shows that credit, instead of that credit going to municipality in another county, in Lexington County, that credit is credited directly to that owner occupied property.
And my and my understanding was the reason, and I can't really speak why they did it, but my understanding was they wanted the true levy to be shown to the people and then to see the credit. Not necessarily the net effect, because Ori County levy is like ten mils. So, but they have so much money that comes in, in the form of their sales tax.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, um, I do have a question. You mentioned arbitrage. What do, what plans do we have in place to avoid paying that again?
Well, it's not a bad thing. It's not a bad thing, so.
From whose definition?
Okay, if you, arbitrage is that you've invested your money and you've earned above what the rate that the IRS rules say you're allowed. There's a lot of exemptions, it's a complicated process. You have earned more in interest than what you're allowed to under the rules. So you have to rebate that. So it's not a bad problem.
But it was taxpayer dollars that were invested, correct? No, so where'd the money come from?
It come from your bond proceeds.
So you you collected more money than you needed at the time?
No. The bonds are sold.
Right.
Then the money from the bonds is invested. A lot of these are very short-term bond issues, so you're issuing it in September and it's paid off in March. So there's a very small amount of interest paid. The other, the the proceeds are then put into a bank account with the LGIP where you, so it's with the LGIP. And then you have to look, there are certain spending requirements, there are certain rules. If you meet all of those rules, you can keep all of the interest earnings. But if you don't meet all of those rules, let's just say you you can't get ten percent spent in six months or you can't get everything spent in eighteen months, then you would just have to pay that amount that was above what you were allowed to earn to the IRS. It's a good problem, because otherwise you could have been borrowing at two percent and investing at one half a percent. And then you're not going to get that interest earnings.
I have kind of two questions somewhat related. I like to compare and benchmark against other districts and and that helps me kind of understand where we stand. And kind of looking back at our eight percent. And Jennifer, you might have to keep me honest, Ms. Miller, you might have to keep me honest. But it looks like, you know, as the years get further out, we spend down the 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 bond issuance. So for example, twenty twenty-one looks like that's closed out, we already spent everything. Twenty twenty-two, we still got one point seven million-ish that we have left to spend on projects. Twenty twenty-three, seven point six million. Twenty twenty-four, thirteen point five million, and we're requesting thirty-five million-ish for twenty twenty-five. Is that pretty standard on how kind of the eight percent spend occurs? That you kind of have a tail to your projects for a couple of years? And is that kind of spread pretty common? Does that make sense?
Yes, I mean, normally you have a reasonable expectation when you issue the bonds that you're going to spend the money within the next thirty-six months.
Okay, so we're somewhat within that.
Yeah, I mean, I would defer to Jennifer on the spend.
Yes, as you mentioned, the twenty-twoB bond is going to be spent and paid in full by September thirtieth. There's one point seven million that's encumbered and there's only twenty-seven million left that needs to be spent. And that's actually interest earnings, twenty-seven thousand, sorry. Clark was about to panic, he had that much money to spend. But twenty-seven thousand, which is basically the interest we've earned last month and this month, and they've got a plan already to spend that by the end of September.
Perfect. Okay, second question. I'll try to state this a little better. I feel like reading in some of our previous financial reports that the proportion of our debt is kind of on the high end. But I think I understand that it is on the high end because we're a growing district and we have a growing number of facilities and things to maintain. Is that an accurate, first of all, representation of our ratio of debt compared to other districts our size? And then what it represents?
I would definitely say part of it is is Lexington one has been a high-growth area. Nowhere near where Fort Mill is. I mean, Fort Mill has a ref, has had a referendum almost every two years. They're building new facilities. So I I would say it really, in in some ways, is a sign of a very healthy community and a growing community. You you don't have, as we said with the tax base, a lot of your tax base is all owner occupied home, is substantially owner occupied homes. And so that that brings children. Children need seats. And so it it really, that's why I said the needs drive, should drive the decision. They should drive your capital improvement plan and then figure out, say, is this where we need to be?
Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher, I have a follow-up arbitrage question. So in our reports, I guess in October twenty twenty-four, we ended up paying, I think, about five hundred and thirty-nine thousand in arbitrage. That is paid directly to the IRS because we earned too much money?
You earned more than you were, you earned more than the rules allowed.
And I'm I'm asking this question within the rules. Is there anything that a district can proactively do to cause that payment to be lower? Or is it just whatever it is is what it is and you have to pay that amount?
You can look at what the spending exceptions are. And my understanding is, you know, you have a rebate analyst or rebate firm engaged that works with the dis, works with Jennifer, works with the district. They they get the information and look at it. And so if there's opportunities for savings, the guys at AMTEC will say, hey, you you need to spend this money before you spend this money if you can.
Okay, I that probably, we don't have to talk about it here, but that's probably something I'd like to understand. Because if there's something we could do to help the district or to help our facilities in some sort of way and not have to spend that five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, I don't know if it's possible.
It's not a bad thing. It's it's almost as if, let's just say, you know, I gave you twenty dollars and you were really only allowed to receive fifteen, then that other five that you received needs to go to the treasury. That's all it is. That's that's arbitrage in its simplest form. You know, you made twenty bucks, you were only allowed to make fifteen. You just gotta give that other money, because the reason being is you sold your bonds at a tax exempt basis. So the investors that purchased those aren't paying any taxes on the interest income. So because of that, you're able to borrow tax exempt and you're able to invest in a taxable world. And so that's where there is a natural disconnect there. So it's not a bad thing at all.
Okay, and I guess the only other question, Ms. Miller, do we anticipate another five hundred thousand dollar bill in twenty twenty-five? Even though it's a good thing, is, do we expect that again?
It varies and it really also depends on, you know, five years ago, interest rates were much lower. And so you didn't hear about arbitrage because you weren't earning interest on those investments, on that money that you received. And again, it's a good thing, we're making a lot of interest. So while we had to pay five hundred thousand, we also earned over five hundred thousand. And so the government is basically wanting a piece of the pie. And that's why you have to return that amount to the government, because they were tax exempt.
The calculation of payments due, five years.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Board, do you have any other questions? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Price, I'm going to turn it over to you now for our annual report on student and staff safety, mental health, and access to support services.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Tonight I bring to you our first or inaugural annual update on safety, health, and services. You may recall that the board adopted a goal that stated by September twenty twenty-five, the board will receive an annual progress report on indices such as student and staff safety, mental health, and access to support services. This is our first report of this nature, so I hope that it meets expectations. If not, we'll take feedback and build from this point forward. So here are a few representative data points with regards to safety activities during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We asked our law enforcement partners to assist us with security at more than five thousand events with an investment just north of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Majority of these, as you might imagine, are athletic events. They assisted with morning and afternoon traffic detail at multiple locations for approximately eighty thousand dollars. We conducted more than two hundred behavior threat assessment management trainings, over five hundred sixty drills, and one reunification training. We've completed over twelve hundred camera upgrades and trained one hundred percent of employees on our new Synthetix Alert system. Now, we're still trying to remind everyone that three pushes means I need help and multiple pushes locks things down and notifies law enforcement, but we're getting better. Sometimes people get excited when they need help. We completed active shooter training for all campuses. We were awarded a one hundred thousand dollar safety grant that we are using to update our safety tent on school windows. We are awarded a fifty-four thousand dollar grant from Schizbit that we've used to purchase safety prevention equipment. We are happy to report that we have an SRO in every school and we're so happy to have a collaborative relationship with Sheriff Coon in Lexington County, Chief Green in the town of Lexington, and Chief Harmon with the town of Pillion. Our vape detector installs are currently being completed in all of our middle and high schools. And our safety department with Chris Ellisor and Sean Spivey completed over two hundred vector tickets last year. This year, we're happy that Mr. Chip Spradley has joined the team to help fully staff that department once again. Mental health continues to be a challenge for our students. Even with our counselors making referrals, not all families are ready to embrace those services. In this chart, you can see the number of suicide screeners that were performed last year after a student made any type of comment regarding suicide. We are so fortunate to have a response protocol that includes caring adults who respond in an instant. You can also see the number of social worker referrals that were made last year. And I'll share services that we provide in an upcoming slide. The last three rows are the number of in-school counseling sessions conducted by our school counselors to assist our students in making good choices or in navigating through challenging situations. We also have mental wellness teams at every school who meet regularly to discuss students who may need extra support. When these meetings are held, the teams may be discussing multiple students within the school at that given meeting. Lexington One is fortunate to have several collaborative relationships with outside providers. These agencies come into our schools to provide services for families who have elected to receive them. Of the one thousand five hundred and sixty-five students served, one thousand four hundred and seventy-three of them were onsite. The remaining sessions were conducted at the agency's office or some other location. We have added two more MOU agencies this year and one of those will be, will be working exclusively with AES, thanks to Mr. Williams's efforts. With regards to support services, I'd like to start with what's provided to our students coded as homeless. Homelessness is defined as lacking a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. You can see a variety of examples there. As you can see, our student population experiencing some form of homelessness has increased over the past five years. The numbers you see on this chart represent year-end numbers. So far this year, we've identified one hundred and seventy-one students who can benefit from McKinney Vento Services. As you can see here, there are a number of supplemental services that we are able to provide. Folks are often aware of food and school supplies that we provide, but there are so much more. We also assist with transportation, childcare, tutoring, and family planning. Mrs. Alma Puente Ruiz is our district social worker and our McKinney Vento liaison. She has helped establish an extensive partner network in our, in our community to help with financial aid, shelter, medical care, legal services, and early childhood education. In addition to our students, we also provide support services for our employees. And in addition to our employee safety protocols managed by HR and our counseling services, we also offer an employee assistance program through our benefits provider. In addition to onsite support following a crisis, our employees can initiate contact themselves at no cost to them. We've had between seventy-eight and one hundred and twenty employees take advantage of this service, which is now provided by Telus Health, and ninety percent of those contacts were initiated by the employee themselves. And finally, we are so fortunate to have an education foundation that supports students, employees, and families. Under Julie Washburn's leadership, our foundation dedicated over one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in assistance funds last school year. These funds included LEAP emergency assistance grants, Helping Hands grants, and emergency grocery gift cards. They also assisted with higher education support, international teacher grants, and nursing supplies. So, Madam Chair and ladies and gentlemen of the board, that completes the inaugural annual update on safety, health, and services. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Price. Board members, do you have any questions for Dr. Price at this time?
I have a quick question. First of all, though, thank you for this presentation. Very helpful to understand all the resources and services we're providing, students and staff. One piece that I didn't see, but I'm guessing that there is probably in place and I'd be curious to get more information on, is how do we engage our students in helping with these initiatives? I think about old-school hall monitors, which I don't know that we have that or would we even want to call it that today. Phrases of see something, say something. How, how do we engage our students as future leaders to help us with these initiatives? Because I truly believe that it takes us all and I, I bet that there's, there are schools already doing this and we probably already have initiatives. I'd just love to learn more about them.
Okay, I'm looking at Mr. Zan Tracy Pender out in the audience. Mr. Pender, are you able to step to the mic and share anything specifically regarding that question?
Good evening, board. Our school counselors do provide services to students in helping them understand about triggers and they do support services. So we're constantly training our students, if you want to call them that. Don't say this, say that. When you have, when you see something, say something. Peer reporting is one of my most reliable things we have and they tell counselors quite often, my so-and-so said this, so-and-so, and that's when I become one of our most reliable things we're using. And plus, I'm going to, Chris Ellisor and then our, our badges also have text numbers and then we can text and say something. And we get calls in the night that also say, hey, we got a kid with a problem. Quite often, a parent will call us and say, hey, my child got this text. Can you help me? And it may be nine o'clock at night and we provide that support and help. So we do have things in place and students are very aware of it and they do tell their parents about it.
Thank you, Mr. Pender.
Madam Chair, something that's been heavy on my heart when we talk about safety and in light of some of the conversations we've had already today. I'm sorry, this is just emotional. It's hard as a parent. So just give me a minute. I do, when things are super heavy on my heart like this, I can't just not say anything. I feel very strongly that our board needs to take a step to have consistent conversations about safety in our district, mental health with our students, how technology in today's environment plays into our students' safety. When you look at our policies, we, and this isn't, this is nobody's fault. It's just the nature of technology. But we have policies where the technology has outprogressed the policy. And I really feel very strongly as a board that we should take some specific steps. I don't know what those are. Exactly, but we need to start having some conversations a little bit more proactively and deliberately opposed to hopefully just waiting and seeing as things progress, what we may or may not do about it. I would really like us to be proactive, as we heard about today, opposed to reactive. So I don't know if the board has any thoughts. Anybody else has anything we might be able to do to accomplish that? There's already things in the works.
Madam Chair, what is the, what are the steps to create perhaps a committee of some sort that we could really put, you know, a couple of board members, you know, a few board members on to really just dive into those specific policies? Perhaps creating a few new policies that are more relevant in today's world?
Yeah, we definitely have mechanisms in place to put together, you know, a committee with two or three. Personally, as a board member, I think that collectively we all have a very, like, invested interest in this discussion. And so I would possibly want us to consider not doing a committee and, as a whole board, discussing this kind of stuff. We could have Dr. Price start off with an update on where we are, what, what are we currently doing? And then the board can evaluate next steps, where we want to move with that.
May I add?
Yes, sir.
Thinking about what Mrs. Flashnick said and the question that, that Mrs. McCown posed. If, it may be good for the board to have some discussion amongst itself to find out what are the pieces that, that maybe you've got more questions about. And once you can identify those policies or those practices that we have in place in our school district, that would allow us to bring forth a presentation about where things currently are. From there, if you want to take a deeper dive, then that may be the opportunity to either assign a committee to dive in deeper or to address it as the board as a whole. So.
Maybe even in like a workshop or something like.
Correct. There are various mechanisms.
I think workshops is actually a great idea. Why don't we, why don't we look, look into that? I just think when it comes to safety and the things that have happened in the last two weeks and, and several schools across, across the country, it's just kind of given us another reason to, you know, be fiery about this topic. And I think we just, you know, I don't want to move slowly on this and sometimes, you know, I get what you're, what you're, how you feel about committees and, and you and I share, you know, the same feeling on certain things with committees. But this, this topic, I think, you know, in a committee setting or a workshop setting could be very beneficial and it could perhaps move things a little quicker than waiting to like get something on the, the agenda and then, you know, move, kick the can down the road. I think, let's just get, let's get on it, you know? Let's get it, get it moving. Maybe by the end of the year, we can set a, a meeting, a workshop. I don't know. I know we have a couple already, but this is super important.
So I just have a quick piggyback off what Ms. Flashnick said. Are we, are we specifically talking about the board's feelings on mental health? Or are we talking about technology and technology's impacts on mental health? Or are we talking about all the above? I was, I was trying to make the connection between the presentation we had and the comment that you had and what's our end goal?
I mean, I think for me, they're all related in a sense. When I think of safety, I think of it, I think of physical building safety. I think of technology safety in today's environment, which probably wasn't a conversation even maybe five years ago. I think of the mental health of being in a building and things occurring and the mental health of technology situations playing into the safety of our students. So I look at it as an all-encompassing. There's not a right word for it. I mean, mammoth amount of things. But I think they all play together. I mean, I think there's a couple of policies that we can point out that we could easily attack by looking at them. I think technology, we've taken a good first step with the technology beliefs and the way that we're using them in instruction. But what about for our parents and students and the safety of the technology that our kids are using? What steps are we taking or not taking? We have a lot of committees for other things, like advisory committees, not necessarily board committees. So it's just, I think it needs to be a constant conversation of all of those topics. Does that answer your question, Mr. Rice?
That does answer my question. Cause I was thinking mental health, but you were talking about safety, but there's all the aspects. So now, I, I know where you're going now. Thank you.
So kind of just what I'm hearing is maybe we need to look at our calendars and get something where we can put some ideas together, put some questions, some wonders, and then come together and talk through that.
One suggestion, I'd be very interested in kind of detailing out exactly what are we wanting to target in, in making sure we're most efficient and effective with the resources and the time that we have. I do agree, safety is a topic that is on a lot of people's minds, but it's a big topic too. So I think it's important for us to refine down, like, what can we bite off and, and truly, I mean, what is the biggest concern? Is it building safety? Is it technology? I feel like I'm hearing more technology from you. And if that's it, let's focus on technology, but start with what is, what does that look like today? And make sure we have a full understanding of what we have in place today to determine what recommendations the board might have to change or update or add or whatever that may be. Just a few thoughts.
All right. So board, under nine point two, the annual report on students and staff safety, mental health, and access to support services. Any other comments or questions at this time? All right, we are going to move on to nine point three, pre-K programs and updates. And Jessica Buzart, yeah, there she is. She's our coordinator of early childhood and family engagement.
Good evening. I think it's on. Sounds, sounds good. Dr. Price, Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm excited to be here tonight to present a preschool update. I could talk about this all night, but I won't. But I do have some exciting information to, to share with you. We're going to start by looking at growth over time of our four K general education program. So you'll see here the growth over time from school year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three through current. You will notice that we have been able to add an additional fifteen classes over the course of these four years, which equates to serving three hundred more students. That is a big, big, big deal for these students and families. And so to provide you some more context about those, well, let me go back one. I just want to say the number out loud that we are currently serving seven hundred and twenty students in our pre-K general education programs. And if you look back to twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, four hundred and eighty students, we were serving, I mean, we've, we've nearly doubled. I know not quite, but we're, we're getting close. So I know the families appreciate the commitment to the pre-K program. So showing you specifically in schools how this has grown over time. And so you'll notice in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, not every elementary school is listed. And the numbers in parentheses represent the number of programs in those schools. So for example, Centerville Elementary had two four K classes and each. So for example, Centerville Elementary had two 4K classes and each 4K, 4K class serves 20 students. And then we made a big shift in 2023, 2024 and added eight additional classes. Um, five brand new classes, three classes transitioned from um, tuition base to the traditional um, needs-based class. So you'll see the schools highlighted in yellow were new. So Forts Pond was a brand new school, not a brand new school, but a school new to 4K. So we added two 4K classes there in 23, 24. And then you'll also see like, um, Gilbert Elementary has highlighted, we went from two classes to three classes. So over time, you can see how the um, classes have been added at each elementary school. And one piece I really want to highlight here is way back in 22, 23, students had, didn't all attend their zone school. So for example, students that were zoned for Forts Pond had to go to Pillion Elementary. And so we would take um, the students that needed the program the most, based on our screening criteria, which we'll talk about shortly, and then we would serve them all at Pillion Elementary. And you know, that was a hardship because that's another transition for a student than going to kindergarten. So they get used to a school for 4K and then, oops, we, you turn five, now we're going to go to a new school. So now we're able um, to serve students in their home school. Okay, so how are students accepted to our 4K program? We follow the SERTEP guidelines. SERTEP stands for Child Early Reading and Development Education Program, and we'll talk more about that shortly. But we follow the SERTEP criteria in all of our um, schools, whether they are SERTEP schools or not. The three criteria are listed here. The first is 185% federal poverty based on total family income and number in household, and that's the gross income. Um, the student has Medicaid or um, students can also qualify through the developmental screening, which is the DIAL assessment, which assesses students in three areas, motor, concepts, and language. And to meet the criteria um, for entering 4K on the DIAL assessment, if you don't meet one of the other two, you have to, the student has to score 25th percentile or below in two of those three. So motor, concepts, language, 25th percentile or below in two out of the three. Okay, and so students might meet on all three, students might meet on one out of the three. We do prioritize based on the SERTEP guidelines, acceptance based on 185% federal poverty and Medicaid first. Once we fill all the slots um, with students that meet on that criteria, then we go to the DIAL assessment. We do work really, really hard to get all students screened regardless of as, um, whether or not they meet on the other criteria, we use that information in um, determining what students need when they enter our program, determining their strengths, determining their growth opportunities. Um, but we will also, sometimes you will have a class, you're trying to fill 20 slots, you might have 30 kids that meet on 185% or Medicaid. And so then we have to use the DIAL screener as our secondary factor. So then we look at, okay, who meets two out of the three? They go first, and then we go on from there. So that happens a lot, and you'll see that as we transition to the waiting list. And so here you will see, this is a lovely slide, because look at the waiting list decreasing over time. You can see um, in 22, 23, out of, there's, there were 453 kids at the end of the school year on our waiting list. Um, 190 students met the criteria for acceptance, so those three criteria, we just named one of those three. But there were potentially 122 students that could have met the DIAL criteria, but we didn't screen them. So we don't screen all students unless we have a need. Like right now, we have students that are continually applying to our program, which we want them to, but if there's no space, we don't screen. When there's a, a space becomes available, if we have three kids that meet, we need to screen, we'll do that. So potentially 122 students plus 190 students could have met the criteria out of the 453. In 23, 24, out of the 390 kids on the waiting list, 145 students met the criteria for acceptance and potentially 72 students that could have met on DIAL. In 24, 25, we ended the year with 341 kids on our waiting list. 97 of those students met the criteria for acceptance and potentially 52 that could have met on DIAL. And in our current school year, so hot off the press, 261 students currently on the waiting list, 60 students meet the criteria for acceptance and potentially 32 students um, that we have yet to screen that could meet the DIAL criteria. So how are our programs funded? Um, we do fund through the district's general fund, and then also, you've heard me mention SERTEP, the Child Early Reading and Development Education Program. So schools have to qualify based on their pupils in poverty percentage to be a SERTEP school, and that's how we're eligible to serve um, those programs in those buildings. And then in our non-SERTEP schools, we serve with, through the district's general fund. So eight schools for general fund, 10 schools for SERTEP. We began um, SERTEP in the school year of 21, 22. That was the first school year that the State Department said um, the school district as a whole did not have to have a certain poverty percentage, they started to look school to school. And Lexington One is a great example of that. If we look at our pupils in poverty percentage, it is a vast um, difference between schools. And so they decided they needed to look school to school. We started with five SERTEP schools in 21, 22. Those were Gilbert, Pillion, Red Bank, Saxagatha, and White Knoll. And now we have grown to 10 SERTEP schools. I'll watch the pupils in poverty percentage very closely and remind um, the department if maybe we need to add a school because their pupils in poverty percentage has, has grown. And just this year, we did that. Um, we added Lexington as a SERTEP school, South Lake and um, Carolina Springs are all new SERTEP schools this year. So. Another question you might ask is, so um, you know, we're able to open a SERTEP classroom in one of these SERTEP schools using SERTEP funds, but how might we do that um, from the district general fund? And so to open, like this year, we opened a new class um, at Lake Murray and at Rocky Creek. And so the cost for that, for a one-time startup is 35,000, which goes a long way in opening a 4K class. If you think about the number of students that are going to be served through the years, a one-time startup cost of 35,000 and then an annual operating cost um, of approximately $138,000, that's salary and benefits for the teacher, the instructional assistant, and then of course, recurring instructional supplies every year. And so what does our other funding look like? Um, 95% of, so if we take the district general fund and the SERTEP funds and we put them all into one big pot, and then what percentage um, are we spending on our different categories? Salaries and benefits are our people who um, matter the most, make up our largest um, percentage of spending at 95%. Um, 4% we spend on instructional materials and supplies. And just as, as an example of what we're able to provide there, all that students have to bring is really a bookbag and a change of clothes. We provide everything else with them for the program that they need, all the school supplies. You know, um, they have a blanket for rest time, we provide that, uh, anything they need. So it's, it's a huge um, benefit for the family. For tenths, um, for professional learning, you might think, well, that seems awful small for professional learning, but we um, have robust staff in our um, instructional services department, and we're able to provide much of that professional learning in-house with our, our current um, staff. And then we do advertise for our programs at three tenths um, percent because we are really trying to reach the students that need the program the most. So in the Red Bank area, for example, um, about December, January, you'll start to see a, a billboard that advertises our, our 4K programs. So what might a day in the life of a, a 4K student look like? I will tell you, it is very, very, very busy. You have some pictures here. You see in the bottom right-hand corner, these students are um, they are serving coffee at Starbucks. This is a um, hot center that many kids love, love, love. Um, you might know it as the home center, but lots of our teachers have separated the home center into more of an experience center. So I was just in a 4K class and it was a um, apple orchard, they're, they were going to pick apples. Um, another teacher had a pizza parlor, another teacher um, had a miniature farm. So play is very important in our 4K programs. The other experiences that kids get to have um, daily, read aloud, shared reading, writing, and yes, 4K kids can write, put pencil to paper and, and tell a story, they will tell you all the stories. Um, learning about sounds, letters, words, math, so many fun things with many hands-on learning experiences. Um, we do have other early childhood programs and partnerships. The Family Center offers services prenatal through school age and offers a variety of programming. We have a, uh, while South Carolina First Steps has been our partner for quite some time, we do have um, some new work we are doing with them at connecting families on our waiting list with SERTEP programs through South Carolina First Steps. And so we've been able to place, um, well, South Carolina First Steps enrollment specialists have been able to place many of our waiting list families in First Steps programs. Then our Title I schools, we have Family Engagement for Pre-K, um, which is a 14-week program that any three or four-year-old um, can attend. And lastly, the impact of the program, the gist of this is, it is working. You will see here that our demonstrating readiness on the kindergarten readiness assessment is continually going up. Um, and you will also see that emerging and approaching is decreasing. You might wonder where this school year's data is, and it's, it's not in yet. We're still assessing, we're still within that um, first 45 days. And I'll, I'll end with what's not represented here in the, this data, um, are the, what the parents say about the program. So a few things that parents shared on our survey last year about pre-K. My son thrived in the 4K program and is continuing to do so in the 5K program. I think the 4K program is amazing. My child loves her teachers and her classmates, and she has learned so much since starting 4K. I'm very pleased. The teacher my daughter had at Pillion was amazing. She really took the time to push my daughter on her abilities as a learner and has flourished in 5K because of the background she received in 4K. We are very glad that our child was able to attend Lexington One 4K program. It has increased my confidence in my child's ability to transition smoothly to kindergarten in the fall. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Board. Do you have, Mr. Rice?
I do have one question. Uh, for a 4K class, just, I mean, it seems like it's a lot of fun, but I'm sure it's a lot of work. Um, roughly, how many students would you have in a 4K class? And is it just one teacher or is it a teacher and assistant or, or how is that staff typically?
Mm-hmm, so it's a 10 to 1 ratio. So we have one teacher, one instructional assistant, and 20, up to 20 students. And we work really hard to keep the classes full. Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I had the um, distinct honor of being at Pillion Elementary and having some lunch with the 4K classes yesterday. Um, and I heard lots of fun stories and the kids were great. And I love this program. I remember we had a presentation a few board meetings back where we looked at some data. I think Mr. Phillips, you did that for us. Um, and you could see that kids who had come through our 4K programs were far better off by the time they were getting to 5K in first grade and beyond. So I would love to see us be able to meet the needs and see that number drop.
And my question actually piggybacks off of that needs. Can you just help me understand the waiting list a little bit more? Because you said there's 261 on the waitlist for 25, 26 for this school year. And you said 60 meet the criteria, so I, the other 200, like, why are they on the list if they don't meet the criteria? Would we take them anyways?
Great question. So we're always looking to connect students with services. And so we encourage all families to apply um, to the 4K program because let's say, well, during the COVID year, during school year 2020, 2021, we were able to fill um, all of our programs, like initially, and still had space because families were, you know, keeping their kids at home. And so we, we didn't even have to use the waiting list at that time. Now, we want our, we want our kids to apply, that's how we connect them to like the pre-K family engagement program. Were you going to say something?
No.
Okay. Um, we also, so out of the current 261, 60 students meet the criteria for acceptance. So if a spot becomes available, then we're going to rank those kids using, so if we have five kids that meet the criteria like Medicaid or 185%, then we're going to use DIAL and we're going to accept the next student. So just like today, I think we placed five students. Students have moved away, you know, um, just, just various reasons. They may even get a different class placement, just all sorts of things. Does that help?
Yeah, that makes, that makes sense. Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
All right, Board, next up is Shane Phillips. We were just talking about you, um, to present the Fall 2025 iReady Academic Assessment Report.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, Madam Chair, Dr. Price, members of the Board, um, I'm pleased tonight to present the results of our initial administration of iReady uh, for this school year. So a little context, um, by law, uh, the state requires that we administer an interim assessment to all students in grades K through eight, three times a year, fall, winter, and spring. Uh, and we are to select that assessment from a list provided by the department. Uh, we've used iReady, I believe this is year four, it's year three or four on, on iReady. Um, iReady is an adaptive test. Um, and just in short, what that means is, is the test difficulty adjusts based on whether a student answers a question correctly or incorrectly. And the vast majority of the tests on uh, the department's lists are adaptive tests because it allows um, you to find a student's ability level in a shorter amount of time. And so it minimizes that amount of time a student takes uh, with the administration of the test. Uh, we provide diagnostic assessments in reading and math. This uh, assessment is used by school to identify the student's instructional needs and serves as one indicator for third grade retention. So we'll start with our overall results in reading. And what you're looking at here is their overall placement, and this is what we refer to as the three-level beginning-of-the-year view. And that's important because what you see there are sort of their risk levels as far as um, ability within the grade level. So the green down there at the bottom is tier one, those are the students who are least at risk. Now, this includes students who are at or above grade level, early on grade level, which we'll talk about uh, on the next slide, these, all these levels, and one grade level behind. And so I get a lot of questions sometimes about why one grade level behind is included in that low risk. Well, consider you have a third grader coming in. We give this test in August. These kids are third graders coming in, having just finished third grade, being tested on fourth grade things. So it makes sense that they may not be, they have not been exposed to fourth grade content, therefore one grade level behi- behind is reasonable. When one grade level behind becomes an issue, is the middle of the year and the end of the year, right? And so that's why this beginning-of-the-year view is what we use. There's, there's a couple of other views, and we'll look at the results of some of those here in a second. But you'll notice here that about 74% of our students are in tier one, um, which is that lowest risk with another 26 being um, in those lower tiers, 13 in tier two and 13 in tier three. So if we break that out by grade and look at how we have trended over time on these, this is looking at it in a five-level view, all right? And so those five levels are mid or above grade level, early on grade level, uh, grade level, or one grade level below, two grade levels below, or three or more grade levels below. All right, so this is a cross-sectional analysis. So this is looking at kindergartners in 23, 24 compared to kindergartners in 24, 25 compared to kindergartners in 25, 26, for example. And so you can see there, what we're looking at is we're hoping that the green bars at the top get bigger and the red bars at the bottom get smaller. All right, and we have, what we see really is basically just, in, in kindergarten, we had some good jumps there. In first grade, stayed pretty much the same in both the top and the bottom. Grade two is interesting, right? Because we, our top part grew a little bit and our bottom part grew a little bit. So we kind of are regressing here to the middle a little bit on that. And then um, grade three, we had um, a good jump from 23, 24 to 24, 25, but then it has pretty much stayed the same. Uh, grades, but grade three, notice, these green bars are so much bigger than the other grades. That's really interesting. In grade four, we had growth at the top and shrinking at the bottom. And grade five has stayed pretty consistent across the top part, but has shrunk at the bottom. So that's good. In middle school, same look, right? So again, looking for the green bars to grow and the red bars to shrink, which we see in sixth grade. And in seventh grade stays pretty close to the same. Eighth grade stays pretty close to the same. All right, if we shift over to math, again, that three-level view, 75% now are at tier one with 14 at tier two and 11 at tier three. Just as a reminder, did a lot of work last year, over the past few years, we've done a lot of work in math to try to work on student growth and achievement in, in math. And I think you'll see some of that here. So again, we're looking at the same thing here. Want these to get smaller, or these to get bigger and these to get smaller. So again, second grade shows the same pattern that it did in reading with this getting a little bit, or staying about the same, and this getting a little bit bigger. This, it goes down a little bit and up a little bit here, up a little bit here and down here. Stays about the same here and about the same here in fifth grade. But if we look at middle school, and this is where a lot of effort has gone into working with math instruction, and you'll notice here, good growth in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and we're shrinking these kids who are below grade, grade level down as well. So as we move forward, we'll, we'll give this test again in winter and we'll get a projection sort of how, of how these kids are for being on track toward their target growth levels. And then by spring, we'll be able to see, we'll also get in the wintertime a projection of how, given typical growth, these kids might do on SC Ready. So it gives us, you know, a, a roundabout indicator of what we can expect in the spring. And then in the spring, we'll see their final growth tally to see how, how many of our kids actually met a year's worth of growth or stretched beyond that to go, kinda get ahead of the curve on their, on their achievement. I'll answer any questions you might have.
I have a quick one. So
Yes, sir.
Obviously, this is your baseline, and you said you'll administer it again and do a comparison. Is there any correlation between your baseline for now for fall? Can, can you do a look back to the previous spring and see any, is there any correlation that kinda gives you action steps? Or is it just each year in the fall, we start here and then let's see how we grew during the year?
Well, so a couple of things. So the answer, the short answer is yes, we can look back. And we do get reports that show from spring to fall, if there was, if there was, basically, if we're looking at any loss over the summer, right? So that's what you're looking at there, and that spring to fall is summer loss. And I didn't include those reports, but I can provide those if you're interested. We showed very little summer loss across the board. In fact, in some, in, in several grades, we showed some gains over the summer. Now, the second half of your question, if you could repeat that part for me again.
I guess I was asking, when you look at that, are there actionable steps that, I'm not an educator, so I wondered, does that speak to you and say, oh, I need to do X, Y, and Z?
So these results right here, in and of themselves, don't speak to me much at all as far as action, right? The benefit of these assessments comes at the classroom level and at the school level. Because when these kids take this test, it doesn't just give them a score. It provides the teacher and the family with a list of, here are the things that your kid should be learning right now. Here are the things that they need to do to grow and meet grade level expectations as they move forward in the year. That's kinda where the rubber meets the road. In fact, I've said this many times to folks, I kinda wish there wasn't a number. I kinda wish it was just, here's what your kid needs to learn. And then teachers teach those things and they measure it again and say, okay, well, they got these things now, here's what they need to learn next, kinda thing. So like I said, in, in and of themselves, those numbers don't tell you a lot as far as action, but the reports behind them do.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Phillips, just a quick question. I know you just said that these numbers don't tell you a lot, but I, I, on slide four, when we're looking at the
We're looking at
I think it's the reading.
Is that one?
Go back one more.
One more.
That one. So the third grade fascinates me, and I'm trying to, what is the implication, do you think, of the, the larger green there? I mean, what is that telling us? I mean, it seems to be a pretty consistent trend.
That's, that's a really good question. I have, I have, this is Shane Phillips' opinion, so.
That's fair.
This is the year when things start to count for accountability, for everything else. So everything they've done, K through two, is building up to this third grade where we start taking SC Ready and we start getting these accountability measures, those kinda things. That may or may not be it. It may just mean that third grade is rocking out in both ELA and math, right?
I think if we looked at end-of-the-year data, we could probably
Yeah, the growth is
The beginning-of-the-year data, they haven't had those
Right.
Things yet.
What's interesting, though, is like, if it were, like, for example, if, like, I would expect, if it was, I would expect this second-grade number to be similar to this third-grade number, right? From a cohort, right? But something's happening here that is big in every year. So it jumps from here to here and then from here to here.
Wouldn't that be indicative of what occurred during their second-grade year? Since these, since that third grade Right, so it's more about what happened in the second grade than third.
Responsible for a lot of that.
Yeah. I figured I'd toss you a hard one, you know, to wrap you up.
I do appreciate that.
But just to point it out, I mean, it seems to be a positive thing is happening somewhere there. And of course, if you can isolate down what is that positive thing and then replicate it, that would be the ideal world. I know we don't live there, but
And move it forward into fourth and fifth.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm being intentional in this question, and I recognize we may not have the answer, and I meant to pull it up myself, and I apologize I didn't get to it.
Sure.
But when we did the technology beliefs, which changed really going into this school year, is that correct? So this data would not really necessarily tell us too much about it. But before that, is there any correlation to screen time in a classroom to some of these results?
So you're right, I don't have the answer to that.
That's okay.
But it would be an interesting thing to study, right? And, and I guess to be, to get clarity on your question, what, are you talking about screen time within the classroom?
Like instructional screen time. I know now in our technology beliefs, we've said, well, this grade's only gonna have, I'm making this up, remember, I didn't look it up, but 20 minutes of time. Do we have, can we pull data even if we weren't, if we didn't have a benchmark that says, on average, kindergartners were spending eight minutes a day of instructional time? First graders were spending 42 minutes of instru, random numbers? To see, because there is a lot of research out there recently that I've read that says that reading comprehension is tied to screen time, not just in the classroom, but across the day of a, a child. So I'm just curious if that may be playing a factor in some of the reading numbers that we're seeing.
Certainly would be interesting to look at.
Dr. Phillips, do you mind if I add something to that?
Sure.
So where we do have that data is not the total amount of screen time a student spends during the school day, but if there are certain adaptive software tools that kids are using, like DreamBox and Math, we would be able to say, if they spent 20 minutes a day, three times a week, then this was the impact we saw on iReady for those students who did that. So we have it for some particular adaptive software, but not a totality of screen time across the school day. The state has invested in a grant that we hope will be able to take advantage of soon that will allow us to do that better, looking across software platforms at the impact it's having on student achievement.
Other questions?
All right, thank you so much for your time.
Okay, board, now we are gonna be jumping into lots of first readings of policies. So I'm going to turn it over next to Vice Chair Shealy to discuss Policy BJ and the deletion of BJR.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We brought this to the board last meeting and have made a few additional edits since last time. First was the recommendation to delete the administrative role, not the content in total, but to actually move that content over into the Policy BJ itself. Then from there, two clarifications. One is that at the organizational meeting, which is when we elect our officers, that going forward, the intent would be that that's when we designate the board legislative delegates. It's a new term for it. The other item is we did remove the reference to, let me see if I can get this sentence right, meeting with legislators at least once a year, not because we don't intend to have close collaborative relationships, but that, felt like that locked us into a certain kinda forum and, and timing, et cetera. So just remove that to provide us a little more flexibility. And I'm open to any additional suggestions, recommendations, or questions.
Board, do y'all have any comments to add at this time for Policy BJ?
I appreciate combining them together. I think it's great. It just kind of outlines it there. I like some of the more general references for things. So thank y'all for your work on this.
Yes, I have to give a lot of credit to Ms. Flashnatch. She is very organized and good at these policies, so thank you.
Perfect. Well, thank y'all so much. All right, we will move on to 9.6 for the first reading of Policy BE board meetings, Policy BEA live streaming of board meetings, and Policy BEDI news media services at board meetings. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Roof.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Price, members of the board. We bring one new policy, BEA, and revisions to two existing policies, BE and BEDI. This is the result of a state law change that passed this spring. The policies were included in the August 29th board brief for introduction. And the versions that are presented for you tonight incorporate board member feedback that we received after the introduction. Just a quick summary about the state law change. It requires public school governing bodies to livestream meetings, excluding any executive sessions that meet the Freedom of Information Act laws. Also requires that those meeting videos be posted within two business days. And if for some reason livestream fails and we are unable to make reasonable efforts to restore it during the meeting, we have to post a recording of the full meeting within seven days. The State Board passed the model policy, or a model policy, on August 5th. And the School Boards Association also provided a model policy. Districts have to adopt their model policy within three months and provide it to the State Department of Education for approval. There are penalties for noncompliance that kind of are tiered, starting with technical assistance on the first issue of noncompliance, all the way up to possibly withholding 1% of state funds. I'm happy to answer any questions.
When does this go into effect? Does it January or is it?
It goes into effect as soon as we pass the policy.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have one question, but it kind of dovetails to the next policy, the KCC, that's a deletion. So should I hold that until we go through it? Or can I, they're, because they're related in the topic.
The KBCC, the, the news coverage?
The first reading recommendation for deletion, Policy KCC public hearings.
And you said it goes with this other one?
It, they dovetail to each other only because KCC talks about holding public hearings, which I'm assuming a public hearing falls under live streaming as well. So if we delete KCC, there is some language in there that may belong into Policy BE because it says, "The board will, as policy, hold public hearings to obtain citizen opinion when attendance lines within school districts are to be altered due to construction of a new school," so on and so forth. And so are we, by not incorporating that policy language into BE, does that mean that we're no longer going to be requiring a public hearing if we were to redraw attendance lines or alter them?
We, with what's in BE, it says that the board may occasionally conduct public hearings for the community to express their views regarding a specific issue. The board will conduct sex meetings consistent for policy and state law. So we felt like leaving it on the more open side, as that was already in there. And that other policy is really kind of redundant. Certainly is to the pleasure of the board, is whether or not you wanna specifically state that, that requirement for the attendance lines.
I just wonder why we had a whole policy on attendance lines and then we just, I just wanted to make sure that if we were to do something like that, I would assume the board at the time would
Have a public
Have a public hearing on that.
The tradition has been to have multiple attendance meetings with multiple opportunities for folks to have, give the board feedback, as well as usually at least two board meetings where they can participate in the citizens' participation. That's been the practice. I, just off of my, just looking at it and looking at how old those policies were, I just wonder if they didn't get deleted at a time when maybe the, the policies were updated a long time ago and that was just missed? Or we have found where policies were voted to get deleted and just somehow didn't make it off the, so we were just kinda doing some housekeeping.
Yep. Board, do you have any other questions at this time on the, one, two, three policies? Ms. Roof just addressed. Okay, we will move on to 9.7, which we were just kinda talking about, the deletion of Policy KBCC and Policy KCC. So Ms. Roof.
Thank you again. The, we are just recommending the Policy KB, the deletion of these policies. As we were working on the B policies, I did a comparison with the K policies. That section has not been updated in a while, and we're in the process of working through that. And just thought it would be timely to bring those to during this, during this point where we were updating the other ones.
Okay. Board, any comments or questions? Okay, Ms. Price, I'm gonna turn it over to you next for Policy GCLE and GC, I mean, CLER, unencumbered time.
Yes, tonight I bring you those policies for revision. They were included for the, in the board brief for introduction. The State Board of Education updated the statewide policy regarding unencumbered time to include school nurses on August the 5th, and they issued a memo on August the 12th. The change was made due to the requirements of Proviso 1.11 in this year's General Appropriations Act, which says that the department shall work with school districts to incorporate school nurses into the statewide policy, into the unencumbered time requirements pursuant to 59563 within three months, and pass that policy. So as you know, Lexington 1 has a practice of already incorporating nurses into unencumbered time. So we just needed to go ahead and put this into our already existing unencumbered time policy. So that's what we've done here, is just incorporated that in with our teachers. And actually, in most instances, we go above the 30 minutes that's required. So we are now including them in our current policy. So before you, you see Policy G, GCLE and GLER for revision tonight. Glad to answer any questions.
Board, do you have any questions on the nurses' unencumbered time? All right, thank you, Ms. Price. And next, I'll turn it over to Ms. Gaskins for Policy JEB entrance age.
Thank you. So as we've been reviewing our procedures, just to make sure that they are in line with the entrance age policy, we thought it was a good time to bring this policy forward for review as well. Just a couple of revisions here. First, it affirms that our requirements for kindergarten and first-grade entrance ages are in compliance with state law. And also adds that, also within state law, parents do have the opportunity to sign a written waiver for their student not to participate in kindergarten. for their student not to participate in kindergarten. Happy to answer any questions.
So how? How does this work then if a parent comes to us and says, my daughter's birthday is August thirtieth, and I'd like her to begin kindergarten because she was born at eleven fifty PM? And if she had been born ten minutes later, she would be starting kindergarten?
That is a very difficult conversation to have because it does, it's hard to justify that just a few hours would, you know, be the deciding factor in that decision. But by state law, it says owner before September first. And so by state law, we don't get funded for those students either if we were to go ahead and accept them into first grade or kindergarten.
And so the flip side, if a parent says, my child has a birthday in
September.
Yeah, September fifth. Well, yeah. Well, no, the other way, yeah, no, the summer, like a summer birthday. And they're going to be so young starting. Can they, um, you know?
We do get requests for delayed entry also. Mm-hmm. We did, we did not put delayed entry in the policy for a couple of reasons.
Okay.
We don't want to promote it, right? Because if it's in policy, it might seem like we're promoting that. And also, it is very difficult to enforce. Because if a student has not in fact registered for kindergarten, we don't know about that student. So it would be difficult to enforce a policy for a child that we don't know about yet. We do get the requests from parents, and we do have internal procedures that we use if we get that request to study multiple factors with the family. We involve a kindergarten teacher, a school counselor, a psychologist, administrator, district staff to look very closely at that parent request and to make sure it's in the best interest of the child if we make that decision.
And so is that something that our district has been kind of, you know, tightening up on?
It has watched very closely, yes.
At the end of the day, if a parent feels like it's in the best interest of their child to not, you know, send their very young student to kindergarten, what would?
And say they choose to do a private kindergarten, and then they come to us the next year and they want to enroll their child in kindergarten.
Right.
Do we allow that?
Well, we look at multiple factors if we do that. So we look at, um, so some things that, that we might look at are the weight and height percentile for a child. Like, did the parent do that because of how small the child was physically? Um, how was the child in terms of their social development? Academically, how was the child doing? So it, it would not be, there's not just a clear cut yes or no to that question. They really do look at multiple factors and involve a lot of people at the school and district level to help make that decision.
Yeah, I guess where I was going with that is I struggle that if we give that much time and attention on that side of it, what if you have a, a taller child who's a little younger? You know, it just gets tricky when you start making exceptions and stuff, so.
It does. We do have a state law on one side of it and not on the other, though. That's what makes the difference.
For sure, if that makes sense. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Board, do you have any other questions for, about entrance age? All right, nine point ten. Let's see. This is Policy JH, JHR, and JE. Who am I turning this over to? Who's, oh, your name's not on here. Mr. Cooper. There you go.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Uh, tonight we do bring, uh, for first reading, um, a revision to Policy JH and administrative rule JHR, uh, currently titled, um, Student Absences and Excuses. Um, we are recommending adjusting the title of that policy to be Student Attendance Absences and Excuses and concurrently deleting Policy JE, which is currently named Student Attendance. Policy JH was recently updated, uh, just in the winter of this past year. Um, and so in an effort to, uh, be more concise and reduce redundancy, uh, we have pulled over the pertinent information, the separate information from Policy JE into Policy JH and the administrative rule, uh, and made some edits just to ensure concise, clear language, uh, throughout that policy. There are no adjustments to our practices regarding absences, uh, excuses or student attendance. This is merely a chance to, um, like what a brother colleague said, do some housekeeping and clean up, um, some redundancy in policies.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Board members, do you have questions at this time on attendance, absences, and excuses? Just as a reminder, this is first reading, so if you have any thoughts, send them Mr. Cooper's way. All right, Dr. Price. I think it's that time of the meeting for me to turn it over to you for your superintendent's report.
Back to me again. Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and tonight, as we kick off our superintendent's report, we have. There we go. I'd like to touch on four main topics. As you know, we modified our grading practices for this year, and we'd like to provide you with a preview of what these new report cards will look like. Then we'll take a look at our budget calendar for the year ahead, followed by an update on our device replacements. And then finally, the School Boards Association recently released their annual policy manual update, and our team has taken these new drafts and have mapped out, um, for the year ahead for official board adoption. First, our grading update. Grades should communicate where a student is in demonstrating their level of progress towards mastering standards using assessments. And so with that in mind, that's what a grade should represent. How well has a student mastered the standard through reliable assessments? Um, with that in mind, uh, K through two will continue to provide feedback-driven progress reports, but the descriptors have changed just a bit. NP is now offered when a student shows no evidence of progress towards a standard. PM is given when a student demonstrates some understanding. And AM is given when a student is really close but not quite there. Related arts will only use MET or Approaching MET to report progress towards their standards. As you can see, the new performance ratings will be posted in the upper left-hand corner of the report card. The standards of learning will be listed by subject below with the corresponding rating given if the standard was covered during that quarter. If it was not, you'll continue to see the dashes that you see there. Otherwise, you'll see the performance ratings that, uh, were on the previous slide and are affixed in the left-hand corner of the report card. Or the Feedback Driven Progress Report, not a report card. Um, with all of these changes at all levels, we recognize that communication will be very important moving forward. A common presentation will be shared with all families to ensure consistency. Teachers will be communicating weekly about progress with students' work being sent home. And specific comments will continue to be a part of the feedback report, and we will also be offering parent-teacher conferences to dive in deeper. The biggest change will be coming in grades three through five, as they will now be receiving numeric grades in the four core areas. Related arts will continue to utilize MET or Approaching MET, and teacher comments will continue to be utilized. You will see many of the same communication efforts for these students in grades three through five. New to them will be the availability to see grades in Power School, and report cards will be sent home quarterly for students in these grade bands. For grades six through twelve, there is a continuation of report card practices. And similar communication efforts with one additional note, that year-long high school classes will be reported at the semester while others will be quarterly. This will signify a midway progress report with all grades at all times still being available in Power School. We have prepared an annual budget timeline, as you can see on the graphic on the left. It is a year-long process. A quick recap of what we've done thus far. In July, after adopting our budget in June, we sent our tax mileage information to the county auditor. In August, we monitor class sizes for personnel and make any needed adjustments, and we also present our capital budget plan for approval. Looking ahead to the fall, we will review staffing for non-teaching positions to prepare for the next school year while we continue monitoring our enrollment. In November, we begin reviewing school and department budgets, as well as any increases in services provided. In December, we review the process with principals so that they can begin to identify their needs and communicate those to the senior leadership team. This year, we will have a, uh, Board Work Session where one activity will focus on establishing the Board's budget priorities as we advance through the process. Once January begins, things really begin to pick up the pace. For the sake of time, I won't to go, I won't go into everything that is planned, but we are working towards a goal of getting information and associated costs so the Board can make final, fully informed decisions. The plan is for all of these steps to lead, uh, to our first reading approval in April, second in May, and third and final reading approval in June. If the legislature finalizes their steps in early June, that will give us a much better chance of doing the same thing. If needed, due to unexpected changes at the state level, we may have to bring an amendment to the budget the following July or August. This past year, we did not need to do that. With the previous budget cycle, we had to come back with an amendment. For an update on our devices, you may recall that our plan is to issue a new iPad to our students in third grade and sixth grade and have them use that device for three years. In ninth grade, students are issued a new MacBook to be used for four years. Like the budget, this is a year-round process that begins once the capital budget is approved in August or September, up to the point where they are deployed prior to the start of the new school year. This chart outlines the replacement process with the addition of grade bands K through two. In these grades, because students have limited technology exposure, we reissue iPads collected from the fifth and eighth graders that are still in excellent condition.
And may I ask two questions about this slide? Um, when you say we issue them, are they issued as class sets to the teachers?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And can you explain to me why we give our twelfth graders new MacBooks? And then what happens to them after that year that they use them?
Uh, that is a one-time occurrence that is happening this year.
Just for twenty-five, twenty-six.
That's right. Because of some devices that were purchased early
I remember.
With available funds. And so rather than have them sit on the shelf, we decided to deploy them for a couple of reasons. One, so that they're not sitting on the shelf, but two, we ran into some issues last year with state testing not being compatible with the devices that our students were using. Now with these newer devices, that problem no longer exists. Ms. Garrus, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
No, you did that very well. Thank you.
Let me ask one more follow-up, so I'm following this chart. So kindergartners for twenty-five, twenty-six receive devices that belonged to twenty-three, twenty-four, eighth graders?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct. And finally, our Board Policy Update Schedule. You may recall this plan that was presented last spring. We had some catching up to do, but we've made some really good progress. You've probably felt that a bit from all the policies that we've been updating in the past several meetings. Um, but we will be picking up on step five with the latest updates that were released this summer. Here's a sample shot, um, of, of the document. You have the full plan in your Board packet. But this is a sample of that that shows how we've mapped things out throughout the entire year. We'll also ha, use an opportunity in the fall and another in the spring where we will show policies that aren't recommended for any changes, but will give us the chance to update their review date. In addition, we will be introducing other polity, policies along the way that we have identified as needing an update, but perhaps not from the School Boards Association Summer Manual. So that's some of those other steps that were on the previous slide that we'll be catching up on in an effort to update as many of our policies as possible without being overwhelmed by the process each, each month. And that concludes this month's update, and I'll be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Board, do you have any questions for Dr. Price? Thank you so much. All right, Ms. Miller, I'll turn it over to you for our finance report.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we have the General Fund Revenue and Expenditures as of August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Starting with the revenue for fiscal year twenty-six, as of August thirty-first, there is approximately thirty-three point five million dollars. The majority of that revenue is in state revenue of approximately twenty-three point six million, along with our transfers of four point five million, which are also state revenue. And lastly, the local revenue and the amount of approximately five point four million. Local revenue at this time is only, um, about sixteen percent, or it's about, yes, sixteen percent of the total revenue. Now, you will recall when we budgeted for our local revenue, we are budgeting at about thirty-seven percent of our total revenue being local revenue. And, um, that's, the reason it's only at sixteen percent now is it's very cyclical in nature, and we will not receive the majority of that revenue until January. Next, moving on to expenditures, we have approximately forty-three million dollars as of August thirty-first. And the largest portion of that is with our salaries and benefits and the amount of thirty-five million, and that is about eighty-one point five percent of our expenditures. And we do anticipate that to be around eighty-eight percent, uh, when we get to the end of the year. Next, um, you'll notice that we have made this a comparative slide this month. This is your total general fund balance as of August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Um, big disclaimer on there, the amounts are projected for the fiscal year twenty-six. Those amounts are going to change. Um, this is just based on everything coming in as it was consistent with last year's. You can see last month, we had approximately a hundred and six million, which is the purple line for the fund balance, and it is, um, or this month is a hundred and six million, and that's down from last month's of a hundred and nineteen million. Neither one of those balances is indicative, indicates what our June thirtieth balance is going to be. We still are on track with using eleven million of our fund balance. And as you can see to the far right, that's where we think we'll end up at the end of the year, which is a decrease of eleven million dollars of the fund balance. And then the next slide, we wanted to make sure that was the total fund balance. Wanted to really, um, zone, or zoom in here on our unassigned fund balance as of August thirty-first. Again, the purple line is this fiscal year. The green line was last fiscal year. You'll also notice two solid, um, a red and a teal line. Those are the minimum required fund balance per the Board policy, which is sixteen point six seven percent of your operating budget each year. So that amount has gone up this year because our budget has gone up. Um, I think what really shows on this, as you can see, starting in November last year, all the way through January, we had reached that required balance but did not dip below it because we were not going to utilize fund balance last year. This year, we know we're going to utilize it because we've really tightened up those projections with our budget. And you can see, we are anticipating in January to fall slightly below that required fund balance amount. The good news is that's an annual requirement, so there's nothing wrong. We don't need to change our policy, but I just, it really does show how our cash flow is and the importance of having enough of a fund balance because you do need, um, those funds to actually keep operation going through the year. And again, you'll see it jump up quite a bit once that local revenue comes in, um, January, and then it'll go back down as we get through June thirtieth and have the last month of our expenditures while we're not having so much revenue coming in. Again, big disclaimer, these are projections. These numbers are going to change. This is if everything comes in exactly as we had budgeted and at the same cycle as last year. This is if everything comes in exactly as we had budgeted and at the same cycle as last year. And then our last slide is our procurement reports, showing that we had a total of 1,287 transactions. And 21 of those were considered unauthorized and have been properly ratified through the finance department. And so we're in good shape with those. Again, I'll continue to monitor those. If I see a trend where I need to talk to a school or department, we'll need to do that. But right now, I think 21, when you have 30-plus schools and have departments, I think we're in good shape with those.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Board, do you have questions? Or comments?
All right, we are going to move on to action items. Do I hear a motion regarding policy EFE, EFER, and policy EED?
Madam Chair, I move to approve policy EFE, EFER, competitive food sales vending machines, and delete policy EED competitive food sales as this policy has been replaced by policy EFE, EFE-R.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. All right, Ms. Miller?
Yes, this is second reading. This is second reading, no changes from last month when we had first reading. So this is just aligning that with the model policy and updating our policy according to that.
Board, do you have any questions or comments about this policy before we move forward?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion regarding policy EEC and policy EF?
Madam Chair, I move to delete policy EEC, food services records slash data records retention, and policy EF, finance records data slash records retention.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Ms. Miller?
Yes, again, this is second reading, no change from last month. And these are both because we actually follow the school districts' retention for the general records retention schedules for school districts according to the South Carolina Department of Archives and History. So therefore, we do not need the policy.
Thank you. Board, do you have any questions or comments?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion regarding policy EBCB and EBBC?
Madam Chair, I move to approve policy EBCB, safety plans and drills, and delete policy EBBC, safety plans and drills, as this policy has been replaced by policy EBCB.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Do I have a second?
Second, only if she repeats that again.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Cooper?
Yes, ma'am. And these policies, this policy has been recodified to the updated board policy lettering EBCB. It contains no changes since the first reading. And the red font that you do see in there is just our updating the policy to include the model policy's narrative language.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Board, do you have any questions for him?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. All right, at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Cooper to give us an update since the approval of the River Bluff High School Press Box project at the July 14th board meeting.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you. And Madam Chair and board members, you did receive a packet of information in your folder. So I'll just ask that you do reference that. As you'll recall, at the July 14th board meeting, you approved to use 2018 bond referendum funds to provide some structural enhancements to the River Bluff High Press Box. During that discussion, we talked about the, about the recommended changes and assurances that they would correct future problems to ensure that we don't have future problems at River Bluff High School with that press box due to the settling and the shifting that's occurred and the movement of those masonry wing walls. Since that time, we've continued to work with our structural engineer on options and assurances that we could have that the, that the project is going to meet the district's and the board's goals. And tonight, and bringing forward to you, a second option for the repairs at River Bluff High School. They are different in scope to what we shared back in July. They are also different in the budget estimate to conduct the, to construct the repairs. So that's why we're bringing them back for your consideration and then ultimately, your direction on which way to move forward. As a quick recap, the, the, the construction project that we brought forth and discussed in July was to provide some lateral stabilization, some steel, steel, steelwork to stabilize those masonry walls to the existing, to the existing press box to reduce that shift. The option two, that, I'll just call it option two, that I've shared with you tonight, it looks at the project from a different, from a different standpoint. It takes into account the removal of those masonry walls and the construction of, the, the construction of steel, steel frame, vertical frame, X-bracing, and also foundational, foundational support to, to provide the, the necessary, the necessary structure and stabilization of that, of that facility. Along with that, you'll see two letters from our structural engineer regarding his summation of the project and the assurances he can give us that it does, that it will meet our needs. So as you're looking through that, you will see, along with each budget estimate sheet, you'll see that, you'll see that letter of, of support of what assurances that we can be given. Just as a, as a quick recap, and I know you don't need me to read it to you, but with option one, though he does recognize that, that he thinks the, the lateral stabilization of the existing wing walls to the press box will be significantly improved by those, those steel structures. He cannot guarantee that we will not have future problems, you know, with those, with those pieces of the facility. With the removal of those masonry walls and coming back with steelwork, he does note how the load is significantly lightened in terms of just the mass that those current masonry walls have and the reduction in wind shear that they have as well, to where he believes that it will virtually, you know, eliminate any type of, of movement going forward. So you see a stronger degree of certainty in the structural engineer's opinion of option two in terms of what that project will bring to, to the River Bluff Press Box. We were hopeful that when we, when we re-engage them to do this additional work, to provide us with a second option, that the price would be similar to what we brought forward in July. It is not. It is approximately $125,000 more. It's a much more, there's more work being done. And so with that, you do see an increased investment into doing this construction work. I'll also mention that these prices, these are budget estimates. These are not quotes. But it does give us a, a, a good indication from the field of what to expect regarding the type of project we choose to initiate.
Since you said it would be more work, what's the timeline on a project like this?
We estimate that it will take, you know, just over a month once it begins. So there would be, you know, of course, we'd have to, the, the construction manager would have to engage his subs, materials, and, and everything. So would not be able to start immediately and would not want to start immediately. We estimate that we would be able to move forward as football season is concluding. And this would be a project that we would be able to complete in the winter, you know, in a month, month and a half type timeframe.
So during that, those times, I know, like lacrosse and soccer, will it affect those things?
No, it would be the, the time when they are not in that field. Yes, ma'am, not in that facility. If there is some open season work, and I don't have those dates right in front of me, but there might be some times where we have to just adjust where folks can be in that facility to ensure, you know, safety first and foremost.
All right, Board, do you have questions for Mr. Cooper?
A quick question. And I'm not an engineer, so I'm definitely looking for some clarification. So...
As you say that, I'm going to ask our engineer to move his way toward the mic.
So it, I mean, in my, in my mind, it doesn't look like either one's a guarantee. That the second option that costs more may be a better guarantee. But how much better? Do we have a sense of that? I guess I'm trying to figure out, is it worth spending another $120,000? And, you know, how do you quantify or verify that?
Good evening, Board. Dr. Price, I'll try to answer that for you as best I can. The existing masonry wing walls there are heavy structures that exert a large actual load on the ground. So in the last 13 years that this has been in place, it has been pre-loading the ground. And you're experiencing settlement, so it's compacting the soil under it. All right? So when, if and when we tear those down, we are lightening the load, the actual load that is now going on that pre-stressed, pre-compacted soil. So we have two issues going on there. That is the load, the vertical load and the settlement, also wind load, your horizontal movement. Okay, so in tearing down these existing structures, building back new steel structures, we are significantly lightening the load on pre-stressed soil. So the, the, the chance for it settling any further is greatly, greatly reduced. Also, in getting rid of those big walls, which are acting as sails, basically, you're drastically reducing the wind load. And we're tying the new steel substructure back into the press box. So in my professional opinion, it is in the best interest of the district to do that.
So then those brick walls serve more of a purpose than just cosmetics?
The existing brick walls, it was, it was mostly cosmetic. And the steel stairs tied into them.
So then why, so now we need to add a steel structure back?
No.
Remove all the brick thing and do something totally different.
No, ma'am. We are keeping the existing steel stairs. All we're getting rid of are the masonry wing walls. And instead of building back a masonry wall, we are putting in a steel frame, which is lighter and allows the wind to pass through it.
Madam Chair, I think I'm on the same wavelength. And it's because we're not engineers and we're not construction people. Maybe we have one up here, but I'm not. I would, my brain is having a hard time computing, why is it more expensive to take down than it is to fix? Does that make sense to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Just my, I don't mean to cut in, but it's my two cents. So when you tear something down, it's, it's not just the fact of tearing something down. You have to pay for the demo. You got to pay for the removal. You got to pay for the dump fee wherever it may go. And I can tell you, masonry and concrete is very expensive to dump. There's no doubt about that. And then on the second part is you got to have steel erection to fix that end, to put the frame in. With that's going to come a steel erector, probably cranes. Steel is not cheap, if anybody knows the way prices are. So that's why it's going to be more expensive than just tying, say, a steel rod up top to tie it back to the other building. It is a lot more that goes into a demo and replace than just a, like, small fix.
Yes. And, and the option two, there's many components to that number. You have a scaffolding component. You have a shoring component, shoring up the existing steel that'll hold up the existing. It, it, it can, it is a much more extensive project than option A, but long-term, it is a good investment for the district.
So comment I have on this is, I mean, we can talk about site assessments and where the location is all day long. But I will say, I have done research. I have thankful to Mr. Jet, Mr. Cooper. Look at the boring logs, how the geotech was done. In my opinion, I, I kind of agree with everyone else that it was kind of, this is one of those instances where it's just kind of was an unknown factor. And, and that sometimes happens in construction, especially when you're dealing with, with soil. I'm not happy about the amount of money, the increase that's going to go into this. But at the end of the day, we have to think about the safety of the public, kids, spectators. If you look at these wing walls, if you go to the visiting side and look across, it's definitely noticeable. It's not something that I would feel comfortable leaving up and not having the reassurance of, of option one that, you know, it could fix it a little bit, but I'm worried with that strapping up top. It could put more stress on, up top of the press box and cause more damage from it shifting. My opinion is go with option two. Like I said, I'm not happy about the price. But in my opinion, safety, you know, outweighs everything on this point.
Board, any other?
Madam Chair, that was one of my questions. I wasn't at the board meeting where this was spoken about over the summertime, but I recall that we do have some safety concerns. Are we still allowing people in this area? Are we certain that this timeframe, like, I just want to make sure that, do we need to close this thing off, safety issue? Or is it just it's unstable and we need to fix it sooner rather than later?
It's, this, this is a correction that needs to be made, but it is safe for occupancy.
All right, Board. So at this time, do I hear a motion regarding the River Bluff High School Press Box project?
So Madam Chair, I move to allocate additional 2018 bond referendum funds, which allows for an amended scope of work on the previously approved River Bluff High School Press Box project. This amendment will provide for the removal of the wing wall structures.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pizzuti. All right, all those in favor?
How much are we allocating just up to? Are we just giving a blank amount?
Are we doing what they quoted this, Ms. Shealy?
Madam Chair, I'd like to amend my motion. I move to allocate up to $280,000 of additional 2018 bond referendum funds, which allows for an amended scope of work on the previously approved River Bluff High School Press Box project. This amendment will provide for the removal of the wing wall structure.
Before I second that, we've already allocated some funds, correct?
Yeah.
We've already allocated $153 and some change.
Yes, we don't need, that's a good point, an additional 280.
Needs to be an additional, whatever the 280 minus that number is.
Yeah, I think maybe just increasing the amount to 280?
Yes, okay.
Increase the allocation to, yeah, I think that would work.
For a total of 280.
So I'm, I'm just trying to recall, when we passed this, didn't we not pass two projects together under $1 amount?
Yes, because it was the white knoll HVAC ladder and everything else, and then, and then this as well. But it still had this total included.
But it had this total included.
So we need to, the amendment needs to have whatever the additional amount needed is.
Correct, okay.
So.
The dollar amount is nice, but is it necessary? I mean, I'm just, just saying.
Well, I just have one, one other thing to piggyback off of that is, and if you authorize 280, this, this is, this is a question we've been trying to wrestle with and resolve. If this is an estimate and it comes back at 290 instead of 280, what happens? Does the board have to come back and authorize the next $10,000? How do we handle that? Yes, sir.
I personally think it's important because if it comes back and it's $500,000, are you going to say yes? Because by giving no dollar amount, you're giving essentially a blank check.
Yeah, I agree with, with Ms. Flashnick on that. If, like I said, I'm, I'm for this, but say, you know, we get the actual, the actual estimate back that we sign a purchase order or however we sign it, and it comes out a lot more than that, then we may not have approved it if, if it wasn't. Do you understand what I'm saying? Do you understand what I'm saying? And if it comes back at three hundred thousand more, maybe we have to go back and look, but that's why I think a number is, is good to have.
Oh, I, I, I agree, a number's good to have. I guess I'm wondering is two eighty actually the number that we should have?
Sir, I, I think so. Um, in speaking with the estimator, um, for this contractor, I do know that he used some actual numbers in his budget estimate. I wouldn't foresee that he's gonna come back with anything higher than what he's giving you there.
Okay, I was just wondering because the first option we had had a fifty thousand dollar contingency in it, but the second option only had twenty-five. So I was thinking, maybe he's more refined on what that project's gonna be and that's why he's trimming that number?
He's probably a little more dialed in to his actual numbers on this estimate versus, you know, try, not having identified some unknowns in the first one. So, uh, uh, according to the conversations I've had with him, I think they're gonna be fine.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that then.
Okay, so we currently have a motion on the floor. Ms. Shealy, can you restate your motion?
Yes, I'm gonna amend it slightly one more time. Third time's the charm. So Madam Chair, I move to allocate up to two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in 2018 bond referendum fon- funds, which would allow for an amended scope of work on the previously approved Riverbluff High School Press Box Project. This amendment will provide for the removal of wing wall structures.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy, do I have a second?
Hold on, I'm trying to, second, yeah. Sorry, I was going through my head what amendment, what the amendment said.
I think she took out the additional word.
Yeah.
Um, all right, all those in favor? Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Hold, 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 hold.
Oh.
Hold just a second. So we're authorizing up to two hundred and eighty thousand.
Total.
Total, which includes the one fifty-three we, okay, got you. All right, so I'm an eye, just wanna make sure.
That's what I was going through my head before I seconded the whole, the whole thing.
Right, cuz originally it said additional, and that would've been getting us spiked.
Correct.
Okay. Item eleven point five. Do I hear a motion to approve the Edmentum reproductive health unit for high school as approved by the Comprehensive Health Education Advisory Committee?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Edmentum reproductive health unit for high school as approved by the Comprehensive Health Education Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Um, Ms. Gaskins, do you have anything to add to this?
Just by state law, students are required to have instruction in comprehensive health education at least, at least once during their high school career. Seven hundred and fifty minutes has to be in reproductive health education unless a parent opts their child out of that component of the comprehensive health education instruction. Most of our students get that through a traditional half-credit course, but we do have some students who move into the district later in their high school career, and we need an alternative for them. Because we have new courseware, Edmentum, and no longer use Edgenuity, we needed to take a look at that curriculum. Our Comprehensive Health Education Advisory Committee has viewed or read every single component in that course, made some revisions that Edmentum stands ready to make for us before it's available to students pending your board approval this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Gaskins. Any questions or discussion at this time?
I'm just curious, um, why did they switch to Edmentum?
So we've used Edgenuity for a number of years, and it was time for us just to look at other options out there and make sure that we were using the best product for our students.
You know why, like, was there something that Edmentum offered that, what we had didn't, or something that stood out?
Um, we do feel like Edmentum is more rigorous in nature in terms of being aligned to the standards, and our students had become so familiar with Edgenuity that it had become, maybe they were gaming the system a little bit too, and we needed to make sure that they were truly engaged in the instruction in that courseware.
Okay, and um, just curious, do we have a list of like, all of our advisory committees that we have? I feel like we have a lot of advisory committees. I'm just curious if we have a list of those and who's on them, can we know that?
I know we have a list of the student advisory, the parent advisory, the support staff advisory, and the um, teacher leadership council. So those are four groups that meet here on a regular basis. I think um, there are some additional advisories that come together for specific topics. So if you'd like for us to work on trying to collect a list of those, we can work on that.
I would love that.
We have, we have asked in the past about the, when I say we, I'm speaking of me, cuz I was specifically asked about the Comprehensive Health Education Advisory Committee. And I know some of the roles that are in there for our community is very important to have our values in there. And in the past, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Gaskins, I think we've had to have at least two clergy, or possibly three clergy on that committee.
Is that the committee that you're asking about?
Yes.
Yes.
So that is the committee that the board approves um, by administrative rule, IHAMR, every two years. So that committee will come before you again next September to, for you to approve again. So those are the committee members that are board-approved on that particular committee, but I'm happy to provide a list.
Okay. Thank you. Well, it just, when I was reading it, it just kinda sparked a question in me, I guess, deeper than just that, but you know, we, the board kind of delegates, if you will, a lot of little things like that to advisory committees to, you know, and I, you know, I just, I just kinda wanted a, just a comprehensive list of what those are and who's on them.
Right, on this particular committee, I don't have the names with me tonight, but it's two parents, three clergy, two health professionals, two teachers, two students, and two persons um, that are not employed by Lexington One. And that's by state law, that we have, that the committee is made up of those thirteen people.
But we can have the actual names of those folks too, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Madam Chair, Ms. Gaskins, in your educational opinion, is, this is like touchy topic, of course, too, but is this the best of the best out there? I know you said it was time to change. Are you on that committee? I, our team is on that committee somewhere, or is it just community members, that's what I'm getting at?
Okay, so Edmentum in general is our courseware where we make a lot of different courses available, mostly for um, credit recovery, right? That's the way we use it most, sometimes for initial credit courses. But in this particular case, we're using it not for a course that's for credit, just so kids who haven't taken the half-credit health course can take the required hours per state law. It's not even a, it's not a graduation requirement in terms of them getting a credit, but the hour spent in comprehensive health education is a requirement for graduation. So we're really using the courseware in a unique way to help students who moved in, say, after they were a freshman or sophomore to Lexington One, to be able to satisfy that requirement. But the courseware is used in many other ways. It's used in our adult education program, it's used at AES, again, for content and initial, or credit and initial credit um, at our high schools as well. So lots of different courses are offered through Edmentum, and we did have a lot of input from both teachers and administrators as we were making the transition from Edgenuity to Edmentum. And it was actually a request that we got from a number of schools for several years. It takes a lot of effort to stand up a new courseware system, and so it's something we were very, um, we did a lot of homework before we made that change.
So just to confirm or reiterate, the majority of this instruction is said, done by, is received from a student, if there any, the health class at school or virtual S U in summer or something else, correct?
Absolutely. Um, about fifty students per year would be in this particular Edmentum course. Every other student receives the unit that the board has pre-approved in terms of reproductive health education.
Thank you.
Great questions. All right, Board, all those in favor of the motion to approve Edmentum reproductive health unit? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion regarding the 2024 B Series eight percent capital project budget reallocation?
Madam Chair, I move to move the remaining 2024 B Series capital project budget in the amount of one million four hundred thirty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars, which was originally allocated for technology devices towards the interactive panel refresh project.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. All right, Ms. Miller, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, as you may recall, the district was able to utilize ESER funding to purchase devices last September. Um, as a result of that, we're requesting that the eight percent funds that had been budgeted to, uh, that remain in the amount of one million four hundred thirty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars be reallocated towards interactive panel refresh. You also will recall that last month, when you, the board approved capital projects, it included phase one of the interactive panel refresh. And this will allow administration to move forward with phase one to be paid out of the 2024 funds, and then phase two, which was listed as an additional um, items that did not make the capital project budget list for the 2025 series bonds, would be purchased with the 2025B.
Thank you.
Actually, it's the opposite. We're gonna do phase one with the 2025B, and we'll do phase two with 24B.
Okay.
That's all right.
All right, Board, do you have questions, comments about this?
Just timing, so from a timing perspective, you'd technically do both phases at the same time?
Pretty much.
We just funded a little different.
We've actually started on phase one since that was approved in August. So those first five schools, we finished four out of the five assessments for what we need in terms of numbers and cabling, power, all of that. And we're looking at placing an order for those about the first week of October. And as soon as the fifth school is done with the allocation, if the board approves this, then we'll start on the next round, that phase two, we'll start those.
Thank you, Ms. Gaskins.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I know how important these panels are to teachers, um, and how frustrated teachers are in the elementary level, um, when they do go out. And I know that we haven't had a refresh plan like we have now. Could we see the full refresh plan though? Like, what is fa- what schools are in phase one, what schools are in phase two? Could we get that whole nugget opposed to, the way my mind works, it's really hard for me to piecemeal things like this.
Yeah, on the, on the 2025B that we passed in August, phase one, it, the five schools were listed, and I, I have those if you wanna know, I can read them now, okay? We have um, for the phase one, it's Fort Pon- Forts Pond, Gilbert, Lexington, Midway, and Pleasant Hill Elementaries. And then what we put on phase two, at the bottom of that 2025, where we said upcoming projects, those next five that were listed there were Saxagotha, White Knoll, New Providence, River, um, I always say Riverbluff, that's not it. Red Bank, thank you, and um, Carolina Springs Elementary Schools. So that's phase two. And then the plan will be the next year for the eight percent for 2026. I'll bring the request for the next five, which would be all of the remaining except for um, Centerville, Southlake, and Pelion, because they already have the newer technology. But yes, I can write that up simpler and have it sent to you if that would be.
And then how often do you think we need to refresh these devices? I know that's probably a loaded question, cuz you don't know what new technology might be out there in the future that we don't even know about. But do we have kind of a light, useful life idea of these? That we need to plan to refresh these every X number of years?
We do. What I'd recommend is a six to seven-year refresh plan. Um, and so what we can hopefully do then after we get everybody up is circle back to the schools, cuz there might be some smaller group classrooms that we don't do in this round, just from a budget standpoint, like um, a, a speech classroom maybe. So something where it's a smaller space, smaller classroom. And so we can go back and hit those, and then start the refresh cycle and spread it out a little bit more. So instead of doing five schools at once, maybe we're doing three each year.
All right, Board, um, all those in favor of um, the motion regarding the remaining 2024 B Series capital project money? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. All right, next one is me. Uh, Board, uh, well, let me get a motion on the table first before I start talking. Do I hear a motion regarding the Community Engagement and Communications Plan?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Community Engagement and Communications Plan as outlined with the established dates and times.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rice. Okay, so last time, there was good feedback and stuff regarding our community um, engagement. And so we've set some dates that are spread out throughout the school year. And at first I was thinking, well, let's just try to get them done this fall so we can meet all of our schools. But some feedback that was given was if you spread it out, someone might not have something they wanna come to talk to us about in October, but they might wanna come talk to us in January. So there's opportunities in October, November, January, February, even into March for them to come and talk to us. Um, y'all shared things that, you know, you didn't want it to be like a presentation from us, and then it's going to be more open for, just an open discussion time. Um, I have to give credit to Ms. Roof for this, but the three kind of overarching topics that, when we put out communications about this, is to come and talk to us about academics, culture, and resources. Cuz if you think about it, if anything that, I mean, I could like brainstorm that someone might wanna come talk to us about, we'd kinda fall under those categories, really. Um, and so these are the proposed dates and times and locations. Any comments, questions?
Um, I see where it still says like, roundtable style. What, what does that mean to you? Is that like what we did last time, or?
So I think with, kind of, but it's not gonna be formal in the sense that district staff's gonna be there. It's gonna be truly more board-community oriented with communication and conversations. I'm looking at Ms. Roof just to, like, yes. And, and so people can ask questions and stuff. It's not a formal come up to the microphone where we've got all the district people there.
I, I, I'm fine with, you know, the district. So you're saying none of SLT will come, which is totally fine. I just think that the community was a little bit thrown off by the way that we were kind of sitting. I just think maybe a little bit of formality is nice, cuz it kind of lets someone know, like, the expectation is like, you know, like you're, we're gonna have.
Last time we were kind of casual at library tables, kind of in a pod, if you will. So I could see formal, and this is just me, Kathy's opinion, cuz, you know, everybody has an opinion. Um, formal in the sense of like, set up a circle or set up, in that sense. Um, conversation sometimes, if it's like the board and people facing us, does, I, I wonder if that's welcoming.
I just think that maybe there's a happy medium, that's all. Like, not like this, but also not like kumbaya. Let's, let's hang out, let's talk, cuz a lot of people are like.
What would that be?
Like, there were people that came and they turned around and left, cuz they were like, I don't know what to think of this.
Really?
Mm-hmm, and didn't stay and talk.
Hmm, I don't remember that.
Yeah, so, or there were people that, that came and sat there and they didn't say a word, cuz they were like, I don't feel comfortable.
So they would feel comfortable based off of the position of where they are in the room?
I think, I think people expect more of a town hall feel, which is like, you come up to the mic, you don't have a set amount of time that you, you know, the board is sitting, but not elevated, not at a point where it's intimidating whatsoever, right? But like, in the room with you, and you come to a mic and you present your question, and then the board interacts with you.
So, so just making sure I'm understanding, you're good with the dates, you're good with the times, the topics, the people who are in attendance, you're just concerned is the setup of the clock, of the room?
Yeah, I know that's petty. I just want more people to come, and I feel like if it's set up the way that it was, I, I don't know.
I think that some people struggle in public settings as far as speaking. Like, not everybody has a, the same personality when it comes to sharing thoughts. And when you do have a place to set something that you may have written, opposed to having to sit with like your legs crossed and put it in your lap, and you're really close to people, and you might be nervous already talking to people. So maybe we try it a couple of ways. Like, maybe at the first one, we do it roundtable, maybe at the second one, we do it town hall style and see how it works. But I do see your point on uncomfortable people. Certain people don't like that kind of an environment. Or we ask the community for feedback before October twenty-eighth and see what the community wants.
I guess the suggestion I have is if, if we do a roundtable style versus a town hall style, to maybe announce what format is being used at what venue. And that might give other people option, okay, I like a town hall style, I'm gonna go to that one. I mean, I know we're trying to get to each different community, but. I mean, I know we're trying to get to each different community, but it might be you're doing a town hall. How town hall style at River Bluff? And folks from Gilbert may say, well, I want to go to that one because I like the town hall style. I don't know, just food for thought.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The image that I had in my mind was to do a a combination, I think, at at every meeting. So um maybe take the first thirty minutes, you take divide each of those three sections, which happen to um correlate to the three parts of the strategic plan, academics, culture, and environment, and re- resources. So you hopefully um with some encouragement from you all and from working with our office, we can make some targeted really um requests out there for S I Cs and P T As to send representatives and and um and to increase the number of people. If we're able to increase the number of people, we could have roundtable type community conversation style where um everyone sits, we did this for the graduate profile, um where people sat in a table at first and are given a handout with some basic information about the three areas. And um we want to ask for their input, or the board would want to ask their input for how are we doing? How do you see the district doing in the three key areas of the strategic plan? And so ten minutes for them to have community conversation and board members at those tables, and then possibly have time for someone to share out major observations. Then you have the part of the meeting where you can have a a podium and a a more of that town hall. So if there's something that people didn't get to share, or they want to share to the whole board, that it's set up that way. Um, so that was kind of the idea of the roundtable and um the town hall.
I'd be fine with that, I just didn't want the.
Big group.
Yeah.
That, like I said, that was just um a suggestion I had based off of some uh events I've done. Uh, one event I went to for the Chamber of Commerce with their partnership with United Way. They came in, they kind of had a set of ideas they wanted, their strategic plan. They wanted to know how the community felt like they were doing with their strategic plan. So they said, how are we doing with our, not the same things, but how are we doing with our culture and environment work? How are we doing with our academics work? What are you seeing that's working well? What are you experiencing personally that's not? And people had time to think about it and a little handout to write thing and then share out. And then they also had an open time to just say, okay, what do you think the United Way should be doing in our community that we're not doing or thinks concerns you have? So that that was kind of um the inspiration that I had in trying to just provide a a possible alternative or set up for you all. But again, just throwing an idea out there that you all could then take and and mold into something that you're comfortable with.
I mean, I think from a from a blend perspective is important from a from an overall effectiveness mode. Because I remember us being kind of roundtable, board is kind of sitting here, one group sitting here, another group sitting here, I mean, group of citizens here, group of citizens here, four board members here. But then I noticed when we officially adjourned the meeting, certain members of different groups would kind of pull this board member aside and almost walk you out to the parking lot, and then there was a lot more to say. Because like what you said, maybe they're not comfortable at all in any kind of group environment. But to be able to talk to that board member directly and say, hey, can I ask you this? Because this is just my opinion. I don't think everybody comes to that to try and get their question answered in front of everybody. But I do think everybody comes to be heard about something.
Yes.
By someone. And so that I think that's one thing we need to try and keep in mind is everything's not going to fit everybody. But I think we as board members who attend should be open to, this whole thing may end at seven o'clock, and there may be somebody that now just wants to pull you aside and say, hey, I understand you have children in elementary school. Let me talk to you about this elementary school concern that I have, you know? So I I think we need to be open to it all, so it's not one size fits all. But I think we have to try something and put our best foot forward.
Do we have to record this?
This would have to be livestreamed.
So if it's livestreamed, then like say, because I I'm thinking back to the strategic plan sessions. I went to one of them at Mediglin Middle. And then it's ve- very similar to what Burgess does at with the law center students during the candidate um forum where that you have like, you know, six tables and, you know, board member at each one, you know? And then they've switched around, but we just stay put. And you've got, you know, three or four community members at each table. And then, you know, you just kind of talk about one thing, and then spokesperson kind of says like, okay, here's our consensus for our table. Is that kind of what you're thinking? Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
So um I like that, but how do you, when you livestream it, you really don't get to hear?
The the part that would be heard, um, we would work to make sure we have microphones for the sharing out piece. I think the during the community, during the more conversational piece at the table, um, we would still keep the livestream on, but it would be challenging. I mean, if we put, we could put a microphone at every table, but then you just would hear like lots of people talking over each other. Um, but we we would, in following our policy, need to to livestream these.
Okay.
So uh.
So Madam Chair, have we arrived at a a path forward, or are we just all kind of throwing ideas now?
Well, the motion was.
I'm not suggesting to change the motion or change any, I was just, it was just.
I think we're just talking logistics now, not the actual gist of the motion.
Right, so um all those in favor of the motion Ms. Shealy put out there regarding the community engagement communications plan? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I hear a motion regarding the October seventh board assessment workshop, I mean, board self-assessment?
Madam Chair, I move to cancel the October seventh twenty twenty-five board self-assessment meeting as it will be held during a newly scheduled December second twenty twenty-five board workshop.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I hear a motion regarding the June twenty-third twenty twenty-six board meeting?
Madam Chair, I move to reschedule the June twenty-third twenty twenty-six Board of Trustees meeting to June sixteenth twenty twenty-six.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The members of the Board of Trustees attended the twenty twenty-five S C S B A School Law Conference on Oc- on August twenty-third and twenty-fourth. So now we'll take just a few moments for board members to share a brief report from the conference. So I think last time I started to my left, your right, with Mr. Pizzuti. So can I start on this end with you, Ms. Flashnick, this time?
Sure can. Um, I will just say my largest takeaway from this conference was also my most emotional takeaway from this conference. Um, and we heard a uh presentation regarding Gavin's Law and how it came to be. And there was not a dry eye in that room. I should have not worn makeup that day. Um, and it is the, it it is some of the motivation behind some of my safety questions, technology questions, because um as a parent, as a community member, as somebody who believes strongly in the future of our youth, it was so eye-opening and concerning what our new generation is dealing with in the tech world, and it's scary. Um, and so I am, if you have a chance to go um onto the website, um, they do post all of their presentations, so you can look through it. Um, but I encourage everyone to keep the conversations going. I'm very glad to know that we um do have Gavin's Law as well as some other laws covered in our curriculum. So that's good to know, and parents can find resources about that on our websites. Um, but yeah, it was, it was a tough one, but a good one.
I love quotes, so I like to share quotes, and I like to grab quotes at conferences. So here's the one that I'm going to share today. Um, you have to understand the current moment through the lens of history. You can't understand the current moment through only the current moment. I thought that was very um insightful and thought-provoking. Um, that was a part of, uh, it was a presentation on vouchers. But honestly, one of my biggest takeaways, first of all, um personally, I'm a math person. I've always loved math, didn't really like history, because I can't remember dates and names. But I have come to appreciate history more and more as I've grown and seasoned and gotten more mature. So I'm going to share a couple of history facts that I thought were fascinating and relevant to education in the schools. Um, first of all, it was the South Carolina Constitution that established free public schools. I bet a lot of people in here knew that, but everybody might not. So there's one um tidbit to remember. And at that time, um, we divided the state into the different school districts. Two more facts, and I promise I'll stop. In eighteen sixty-eight, the property tax was established to pay for public schools. And at that time, the state super superintendent of education was also established. The original thought was to isolate education from politics, which is why the superintendent does not, the state superintendent, does not report to the governor or to Congress. They're elected. So I just thought those were some interesting educational and historical facts to share from the conference.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy, all right, Mr. Rice?
Um, it was a lot of information to absorb. Um, I guess the, I can't really put my finger on any particular thing, but it was quite interesting to hear about all of the educational cases and how um constitutional law is such a big factor. And I I'm not going to put my personal opinions out there, but it was interesting to see how constitutional law is being pushed to its limits right now, almost being overturned. So it was kind of a caution to me to really brush up on what the Constitution says and not just what an elected official tells me the Constitution says. So it kind of challenged me to go back and look at what those articles actually say.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, Mr. Gump.
Um, I I don't want to keep this any longer here, but I I will just piggyback on what Mackenzie said. You know, it was um, it was very emotional. Gavin's Law, if you don't know, I'm sure we all in here do know about it, but it um very powerful, his testimony and story. And um so it definitely put a fire under under me, too. And I look forward to seeing what we can do to bring it, you know, bring it back here and make it better, make our district better, so.
Mr. Pizzuti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I started thinking about what to say, and I joked about appointed privilege.
Oh, boy.
Since Mr. Anderson's not here. But I think I can take something I took away from from this conference and kind of mix it with what I wanted to say later on, but I'll say it now. So one thing that stuck out to me, um, there was a lot of information, I agree with what everybody said, um, between learning about all the, um, you know, the history aspects, the 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 constitutional law that Chris talked about, um, learning about privacy issues, that there's so many acronyms that kind of, they all start running together. Um, but one thing I took from was was from Representative Goffey's presentations. And it says, leaders worry about the next generation, not the next election. So we're listening to that and rereading that and then stating that made me think about how things have been, um, and I'll try to be generic as possible, this last week. Um, I am grateful that I am on this board with a group of people that actually communicate with each other. We'll disagree, and good lord, yeah, we'll disagree on some stuff. But we always communicate and work out our differences. And I think that's one thing that when we talk about leaders worrying about the next generation, if we start, don't start pushing our next generation to communicate more, to listen more. Put your phone down, actually have a conversation with somebody. And just put all the the noise that goes on, just kind of put it behind you. Not saying give up your convictions, there's no way, because I'm always going to stand up for something I believe in. But we got to learn to communicate again and not just disagreeing or not liking somebody because of an opinion. So I think, and I I'm I'm glad to be on this board, because I don't think I would have have gotten that and put it together if it wasn't for being on this board and getting to hear something like that. So, thank you.
Wow, thank y'all so much. I will just share a wristband that we got, um, and it just says tomorrow needs you. And so that was really impactful to me, just a reminder to our students that we love you and we need you. So with that, um, I'll move on to the last little item for tonight. According to the South Carolina School Board Association's Constitution, Article Five, the delegate assembly is the policymaking body of the association and is composed of certified voting delegates from active member boards. The number of votes allocated to each board is based on pupils enrolled in the public elementary and secondary schools as per the A D M from the State Department of Education. Lexington County School District One has allocated nine votes. According to Article Five, Section Four, each active member board will certify its voting delegate to this South Carolina School Boards Association before the deadline date for such certification, which is November twelfth. Hmm, I think that date might be wrong. Uh, yes, November twelfth, twenty twenty-five. The board will ratify its delegates at the October twenty-first twenty twenty-five Board of Trustees meeting. The delegate assembly will be held on December sixth, twenty twenty-five in conjunction with the S C S B A Legislative and Advocacy Conference. Just a reminder that the October twenty-first Board of Trustees meeting will be held at Northlake Community Learning Center Auditorium. With that, do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Madam Chair, I do have a point of privilege, but it's not what you think it's going to be. Um, just if, just want to say if if Mr. Anderson is listening, um, you're you're in our prayers, and we hope you have a speedy recovery. And with that, Madam Chair, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Pizzuti, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.